Welcome to the Town of Garner Town Council Work Session for September 30th, 2025. You know, I usually like to start out with a positive comment of a beautiful day or something. Today, not so much, but I got the good news from our friends Imelda and Umberto. They are leaving town. They're going to leave a nice, clear day behind them for tomorrow. And the really good news is about this weekend, Saturday. The sun's going to shine for Fireman's Day. And don't let me forget to tell you that this is the first day in history that the Garner Fire Department is part of the Town of Garner for Fireman's Day. And my dream is that we get to have the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the Public Works Director, the Town Manager, and the Mayor all ride on a fire truck to demonstrate our unity and our commitment to public safety. Public safety is absolutely job one for every municipal government. It is absolutely job one for the Town of Garner. And that goes everybody from the glamour jobs of firing police to the public works sanitation, driveways, sidewalks, the engineers, the loss control people, the inspectors, all of that. All of the, everybody hears about public safety. And always remember, that's our important job here. So having given you that good news, let's move right along to the council roll call.
Mayor Buddy Gutten.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Elmo Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Thank you. Next on the schedule here is adoption of agenda. I hope council members have had a chance to look this over. Is there a motion and a second for adopting the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Vance, second by Mr. Matthews. If there's no discussion, we will have a voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing done, it passes unanimously. And now we get to the good part, some presentations. We have some great information coming, some very exciting presenters this evening. And we're going to start out by asking our Assistant Town Manager, John Hodges, to get us set up to talk about the BRT South, which is the Bus Rapid Transit toward Garner.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Members of Council. It's our pleasure to have a former team member of ours, Het Patel, to come back tonight to update us on the BRT South project. Het is currently serving the City Raleigh Transportation Department as the Assistant Director for Transit. So we're glad to welcome him back for an update on the BRT South project. So, Het.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. It is a pleasure to be back in front of you. I think it's been about two years since I last presented on the project. So I think a update is certainly must do. And we'll, we'll share some information about our first corridor, which is New Bern Avenue, but also provide an update on the current project status of the Southern Corridor as well. So I've already gone over the agenda. I think one of the main focus items today is the construction activities that are likely to begin soon on the New Bern Avenue Corridor. That's the first in the project program of pipelines for Wake Transit Plan, Bus Rapid Transit projects. We're finally at that threshold of awarding some bids and we'll soon be seeing some activities. So that's one of the exciting news I wanted to share. And then provide an update on where we are at with the Southern Corridor, the current status of the project, as well as what the next steps are related to public outreach and some of the key milestones that we're likely to hit on the Southern Corridor in the next 12 to 18 months. We always like to start all of our presentations on the Bus Rapid Transit with setting of the background on the Wake Transit Plan. So in 2016, the Wake County Voters approved a half cent sales tax that was dedicated towards transit enhancements within Wake County. And it identified four big moves to make that happen. Connecting the region, connecting all Wake County communities, providing frequent, reliable urban mobility, and enhancing access to transit. So although Bus Rapid Transit, because it's multi-jurisdictional project, can kind of hit all four of those goals, it predominantly falls within the providing frequent, reliable urban mobility category. And one of those reasons is that for Bus Rapid Transit, we're really increasing the hours of service that the buses are going to be operating in. We're increasing the frequencies of service that the buses are going to be operating in, along with some additional dedicated features that make the Bus Rapid Transit stand out from local fixed route services. So we're going to have dedicated bus lanes for predominantly majority of the corridor that allows the buses to have more speed and reliable service. We're going to have enhanced stations that have better amenities or more amenities for our users that are relying on transit service to get from point A to point B. We're going to have specialized vehicles, 60-foot articulated buses. We're calling these accordion buses or bendy buses. They kind of have a joint in the middle that makes them have more capacity as well as allow for more amenities again on the buses and inside the vehicle itself. We'll have signal priority at signalized intersections. So these buses will be able to communicate to the traffic signal and request an early green or an extended green or a specific transit signal phase to allow for the bus to make a particular movement that it really needs to get out of those congested areas in certain traffic conditions. And then there also will be off-board fare collection. So it would allow for people to get on and off the bus more efficiently and not slow down the boarding process. And then we'll have unique branding for, for the Bus Rapid Transit projects as well. So I mentioned, this is a program of projects. There are four corridors that were identified in the 2016 Wake Transit Plan. New Bern Avenue is the most advanced from an implementation perspective. It is at that construction phase. And then the Southern and Western Corridors are currently in final design. And then the Northern Corridor is currently in a planning study with the City of Raleigh, where we're trying to identify a route connecting downtown to Midtown Raleigh and downtown to Triangle Town Center going north on Capitol Boulevard. As well as you see some dashed lines there. So there's a dashed line from Garner to Clayton, Cary to RTP. Those are extensions that the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is currently doing a planning study on or a concept of operation study to really understand how that service will connect to the core Bus Rapid Transit corridors that were identified in the Wake Transit Plan. So also like to set the stage for these presentations about the federal process. Wake Transit Plan assumed that these projects would have a mixture of local funding that was used to receive competitive discretionary grants from the Federal Transit Administrations to advance the project into construction. And that process under Federal Transit Administration's capital investment grant is a small starts process, at least for these projects that are, we're working on because they're under the 400 million threshold that this project, the program has. It is a two-step process. I have kind of graded out some of the steps that the Southern Corridor has completed within step one of the federal process, which is we've completed our application to the Federal Transit Administration. Our locally preferred alternative was identified in 2021. We have our local funding commitment in place through the Wake Transit Plan to continue to advance the project. We submitted the project for a ratings application in 2022 in August, and we received federal funding allocation to our Southern Corridor in the tune of 85.9 million in May of 2024. So that money is sitting out there in the federal banks that we are currently working to get the project to the next step. So step two is the full funding grant agreement. And in order to get to step two, we still have two more items that we really need to finish, which are codifying our third-party agreements, which is the State Department of Transportation, as well as the Town of Garner for this specific project, as well as any other parties that the Federal Transit Administration would identify as critical third parties to get this project completed. And then the last step is completing our engineering design and utility coordination to at least a 60% milestone that allows for more certainty on the project for costs. It allows for more certainty on the project for what the utility impacts are and getting those relocations out of the way, as well as finalizing that design to that threshold so that, again, we can show the Federal Transit Administration that we're ready to move into the construction phase of the project. So in order to kind of walk through that process, I'll use New Bern Avenue as the example because we've done that for New Bern Avenue. That is a 5.4-mile corridor with 3.3 miles of dedicated bus lanes, 10 new stations to connect downtown Raleigh to New Hope Road, seven 60-foot articulated buses, and then the signal priority at the signalized intersections that I mentioned. I did say, and I think when I presented in 2023, we talked about some of the challenges that we had on the New Bern Avenue project. In terms of getting the project to construction, we noticed from the market perspective, we did not receive any interest in construction of the project as a whole. And so we had to break out the construction activities into various packages to then get more competitive bids from a construction perspective and then continue to move the project forward. So Package One is area that focuses within downtown, coming out of downtown and New Bern Avenue and Edington Streets to Pool Road. Package Two is Pool Road to Wake Med. And then Package Three is all of the vertical station works in all three areas, as well as a little bit of the horizontal roadway work that needs to happen outside of the belt line. I have some visuals from a rendering perspective. And again, as I go through this, when we get to about 60% design for the Southern Corridor, we would be able to do similar renderings that are a little bit more visually understanding of the transformation for the Southern Corridor. And then we'll be able to have that, that we can share at 30% or at 60% designs for the Southern Corridor. But this is along New Bern Avenue at Edington and Blunt Street, one of our level boarding stations within the downtown urban environment that shows the ADA access ramp, wayfinding that's going to be included in the stations. Level boarding again means that the curb of the station is higher. And so when the bus pulls up to the station platform, it's at the same level. And passengers can easily get on and off. If you have a mobility device, if you have a bicycle, it's easier to get on and off the bus. The stations will also have real-time arrival information, again, providing more information to customers right at their fingertips and making it more convenient to ride transit. Again, another rendering of that downtown dedicated bus lane along the right side of the roadway with the accessible ramps on either side of the stations, permeability to businesses behind the stations, and then the flow of pedestrians in and out of a downtown, in and out of a downtown station. A rendering of our dedicated bus lanes within the median on New Bern Avenue. So this is in that Package Two segment that I mentioned, from Pool Road out to Wake Med. We're building the dedicated bus lanes within the median, continuing to still have two travel lanes on either side for the traffic along New Bern Avenue, but will also have signalized intersections at these stations to allow for pedestrians to safely get to the transit stations within the median. A rendering of the station at Wake Med that also shows some of those same components. As I mentioned, we had to break it up, break up New Bern Avenue project into three packages of construction activities. We're happy to announce that July 1 of this year, City Council awarded Package One for construction activities. We did get four bids that was more competitive than our last process of the construction bidding of activities. And we're about to get notice to proceed to the contractor by October, end of October this year for Package One. Package Two, we opened bids September of 2025, actually two weeks ago. We are trying to get council action on Package Two at their meeting, their first meeting in October. So we did get two bids for that package as well. And we'll like to move forward with construction activities on Package Two as well. And then Package Three, which is that vertical station construction package for New Bern Avenue, as well as a little bit of the work that needs to happen outside of the 440 belt line, is anticipated as an advertisement later this year or early next year. So moving to the interest for, for Town of Garner, which is the Southern Corridor that connects downtown Raleigh to Town of Garner and the Walmart Supercenter at Perser Drive. The Southern Corridor is about 5.1 miles with 3.8 miles of dedicated bus lanes. And at the moment, out of the four Bus Rapid Transit corridors, Southern Corridor has the most amount of dedicated bus lanes. The percentage of bus lanes for dedicated buses are highest on the Southern Corridor at 75% of the corridor. There will be nine new stations for the Southern Corridor that would connect, again, that route from downtown out to Perser Drive Walmart. We will also still need seven 60-foot articulated buses to provide that level of service every 15 to 10 minutes in the peak hours. And then there will be signalized priority at the signalized intersections along the Southern Corridor as well. This is actually a station typology that we do not have on New Bern Avenue. But we do have a couple of stations on the Southern Corridor that we plan to be a shared median concept, which is the, the station is within the median and is accessed on both sides by the buses because we have a special bus that has doors on both sides and would be able to access the station on either side and let people get on and off. It's again, this is kind of a concept that we have because of the new roadway facility that was identified in the locally preferred alternative from South Wilmington Street out to Garner Station Boulevard that allows us to have a shared median station within that new roadway segment. In terms of the Town of Garner's review during each milestones, we have identified at 30% designs, the disciplines that are ready for submittal and review are focused on the roadway design, the stormwater design, our traffic analysis completed to date, and existing station locations or assumed station locations at that percentage of design. When we get to 60% design, that starts to add more disciplines from a review perspective. We'll have more codification of where exactly the stations are, what the utility conflicts look like, what utilities need to move out of the way for our project to, to be successful, additional water erosion control plans as part of the construction activities, the roadway plans that are then further refined and defined in the 60% process, as well as the stormwater traffic and the ITS component, which is we are, we do plan to have fiber connections to the stations as well that allows for a lot of our wayfinding, real-time arrival sign information to be connected to, to the network. And then ultimately, in final design, that's the part of the project where you get to review everything before it goes to a construction bid. And we'll have Town of Garner reviews at each milestone. I do want to mention, I think this is on my last slide, but we are ready to submit, and we actually submitted 30% designs to North Carolina Department of Transportation last week. And I think the Town of Garner submittals also happened towards the end of last week. So we're at the review period now for the 30% design milestone to start having some comments that come in from Town Staff as well as North Carolina Department of Transportation. And that kind of takes me to the next part of the process is at each one of these milestones, we like to have public outreach that happens to allow for the, the public to understand where the project is from an implementation perspective, understand what we're trying to achieve and do, and then get some opportunities for comments and feedback at, at those meetings. So I think Town Staff has a hold on y'all's calendar for November 5th as a potential date for an open house. We're still refining that. It actually looks like that may be more like November 17th for the Town of Garner specific event. We're still trying to identify a location as well. So once we have more information on what the date is, the location, time, logistics, we'll be sharing that with the Town Staff to get the word out there, try to get as many people out to help them understand what this project's going to do for the community, as well as provide an opportunity for, for them to learn more about the, the project. And overall program of projects is not, again, just one project. It allows for opportunities to connect out of Town of Garner, coming into downtown Raleigh, and then go anywhere else in the rest of our system. So this is really an opportunity that provides a connection to a lot of other areas within Wake County as, as a whole. And we're going to have two events. We're going to have an event on November 3rd that's going to be at Chavis and City of Raleigh, most likely, and that's the Raleigh-centered public open house for the Southern Corridor, and then the November 17th date that I mentioned. But once we have more details, we'll share that with Town Staff as well. So kind of my conclusion for the presentation is highlighting, again, from a project status perspective, we're at the 30% design milestones with our Town of Garner and the NCDOT submittals happening this month. We're anticipating 60% design completions in spring of 2026, so the early part of next year. I mentioned earlier in my presentation that we have 85.9 million allocated towards the Southern Project, Southern Corridor project from the Federal Transit Administration in May of 2024. And in order to initiate that grant agreement with the Federal Transit Administration, we plan to start our risk and readiness review process in that spring, summer of 2026. And to get to those milestones, again, we need to have concurrence on our environmental documentation from the Federal Transit Administration, which we actually got in April of 2025. So we've completed that step. That's another step that was identified within step one of the two-step process. We'll need our 60% designs and the cost estimates at the 60% designs and the critical third-party agreements. So the critical third-party agreements at the moment on the NCDOT side, we have a review and oversight agreement and a memorandum of understanding with the State Department of Transportation on City of Raleigh as a project sponsor, what their responsibilities are to get the project to construction, what their city's responsibilities are during construction. We will need a future maintenance agreement with the State Department of Transportation. And then similarly, right now, we've started some of the conversations with Town of Garner about what an agreement looks like between Town of Garner and City of Raleigh for us to have right of entry to do construction within Town of Garner jurisdiction, as well as having some of those components identified of right-of-way acquisition process, as well as potential future conversations about maintenance of this infrastructure once it's constructed. Those can all be different agreements. The ones that we really need to focus on for the Federal Transit Administration side of things is making sure that the city, as a project sponsor, has right of entry to come in and do construction activities. And that would be one of the more critical ones that we need to show in the early part of next year or summer of next year to try to get a grant agreement codified with the Federal Transit Administration. And so I will pause there to see if you all have any questions for me.
Wow, that's a lot of great information. Good to have you back in Garner.
Thank you.
We feel like we're in good hands here. Yes, we will roll down the, the folks here on the dais, and we'll start with our own Mr. Transportation, Mayor Pro Tem, Elmo Vance.
Thank you, Mayor. Het, it's good to see you. Very detailed brief. I have one question. I saw the, all the milestones. Do you have an estimated anticipated let date or construction start date for this?
So if we get a full funding grant agreement through Federal Transit Administration in fall of 2026, at the moment, our best-case scenario is sometime in 2028 to start advertising construction for this.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's all I have.
That was my question timeline.
Okay, Ms. Behringer.
No questions.
Comments, questions?
Good to see you, Ms. Patel. Question about the, the New Bern Avenue. I heard a news story the other day on the radio. Within the last couple of weeks, I believe that it would be 2030 before that would be open. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I sort of want to make sure, because I heard that, I thought, well, that's 2030, and the Garner one is two to three years behind that. So the Garner one, if it lets in 2028, would be maybe 2032, or 2033, depending on how many hiccups come along the way?
That is correct. So 2032 would be our current assumption, and that is in response to what we saw from the contractor community. One of the initial reasons why the New Bern Avenue project did not get any bids in 2024 when we first advertised the project as a whole was our construction schedule of two years was really aggressive. So the contractor community felt like there was too much risk in the project to pursue. We did not get any bids. We worked with Industry Day, trying to get contractors in, talk to us about what the risks that they saw in the project. We decided to break it up into packages. That has helped. We also provided some additional concessions as part of that third round of advertisement, which was we went from a two-year construction window to a three-and-a-half-year construction window. And so we would like to do the same things with the Southern Corridor from a lessons learned perspective. As soon as we have 60% designs, get in with interested contractors, learn about the current market conditions, what they're seeing in terms of lead times for certain items, what they're seeing as part of the whole project, a schedule that makes sense. Again, we want to try to balance what might be community impacts of the construction activities with what the contractor community is saying they can deliver. And that, that is a sweet spot. Again, we don't necessarily want to award five years of construction activities just because that allows us to have a competitive bid. But we do want to make sure that we kind of sharpen the pencils on that and make sure that we are still trying to minimize impacts as much as we can.
So the estimated completion time for the Southern round may be similar to New Bern Avenue, maybe a three to three-and-a-half-year construction time?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So it could happen in our lifetimes, is that what you're saying?
That's what it sounds like. That's what we hope, I'll rephrase that, hope so.
All right, all right. Good, Mr. Matthews.
Great presentation, and I had timeline questions, and you've answered all of them. So it's going to move at a certain speed, and that's all it is to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I might pass the microphone back to Mr. Hodges or Mr. Patel? Any other?
Just wanted to thank Het for being here and his team members to be here tonight. We'll have some future discussions with council about other ways that, that we are looking at projects that will play into this project when it's moving forward in future discussions. And we'll be back early next year for some, working on some of the agreements that Het outlined that we will need to finalize by spring of next year. Thanks, Het.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We hope to be seeing more of you and hearing more about this as we go along. Okay? And that brings us to item two under the presentations, a Wake, Wake One Water Plan update. And here to tell us about it is one of our safety specialists in public safety. Town engineers have their role to play too. The inspection department, everybody is trying to keep us safe. So Leah Harrison, our town engineer, if you would kind of bring us up a date on the One Water.
Sure. Well, my portion of this is going to be brief, but I'm happy to bring to you tonight this presentation on the Wake County One Water Plan. The Wake One Water Plan provides an integrated framework for managing finite water resources through collaborative, multi-benefit projects and policies. And I'm happy to introduce to you tonight Ms. Nancy Daly, who is the Wake County Water Resources Program Manager, who will be providing your update on the Wake County One Water Plan. update on the Wake County One Water Plan.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for having me here tonight. Excited to to bring you information on the Wake County One Water Plan. This has been a collaborative effort between Wake County municipalities and community partners that's been taking place over three years and really is a plan to help us ensure that we have the water to support future growth and and protect our limited natural resources. I would say, you know, I mentioned the collaboration and the partnerships. Kind of integral to the development of this plan has been the Wake County Water Partnership. And for those that don't know, it's a board of Wake County Board Appointed Committee that has members of every municipality, as well as different sectors represented. Garner has been present and active in the partnership for many years, and Leah is currently our representative and chair of our Green Stormwater Infrastructure Committee. So we're very grateful to Garner's engagement on the partnership. So before we move too far into the plan itself, just kind of want to set the stage about why why this even matters. We talked, we heard already a little bit about public safety. Water, water touches all of us, and water is integral to that public safety and kind of every piece that that touches our lives in every way. It's no secret to Garner, I know, and to Wake County, that the amount of growth and the the rate of growth that we are experiencing. If we don't have water and if we don't have wastewater treatment facilities, we are not going to be able to bring and support the future growth for Wake County. Agriculture is also an economic driver for both Wake County, the state of North Carolina. USDA recently announced a new hub in Raleigh. Without water, we're not going to have the water to irrigate our crops, the source for water for our our animals. And so, again, water is critical to our agricultural communities. Affordability is something that we could sometimes take for granted, I think. We're fortunate that we, most of us have access to clean water and affordable water in Wake County, but we can't take that for granted. And so as we continue to grow, there's going to be an increasing demand for water. And every water utility is going to have to have some form of expansion to meet these future growth and needs, as well as wastewater treatment. So we want to make sure that we're prepared for that. Our partners are working hard and collaboratively on that. In addition to just meeting the future demands, you know, I'm sure many of you have heard about emerging chemicals of emerging concern or forever chemicals that can be in our water. So this requires additional treatment from our water supplies. This requires additional investment in our water treatment facilities. All of this is increased costs that can affect, you know, utility bills down the road. So we want to plan ahead, be proactive for that. And it's not just those on municipal water. It's also those that are dependent on groundwater, so private wells, you know, in order to make sure and mitigate any naturally occurring contaminants that concur in groundwater, that can require some cost of mitigation. And so we want to make sure that no matter what form of, you know, where you're getting your water supply, or what your zip code is, you have access to a clean water. Artificial intelligence is becoming part of our lives day-to-day. You know, every time we pick up a phone, look at the computer, Chat G P T, it seems to be everywhere now. This, these, these data centers require huge levels of both energy and water to run. And so as these industries continue to take off, we need to make sure that we are well-prepared and learn from others around the country that are experiencing some of the challenges and demands, and so that we, we're prepared and have the water to support these industries. Flooding is probably a little closer to home. Certainly, almost a year to date ago, Hurricane Helene devastated western North Carolina. But more recently, we've had Tropical Storm Chantel, which had major impacts to Chatham County, Orange County. Orange County, the town of Hillsborough, got thirteen inches of rain at their water supply intake. So this has major impacts on our infrastructure, and this has major public safety impacts. So we want to make sure that we're investing in the infrastructure, that we're making the right decisions to be resilient. And drought may be a little farther from our minds, but it wasn't that long ago that the Triangle area experienced a major drought in two thousand and seven. And this actually spurred a lot of action with our municipal and regional partners to work together so that we had, were able to have some backup plans should water, access to water become an issue. And finally, you know, fire, this ties back to the the topic of public safety. The fires in western United States about a year ago, one of the big challenges there was they didn't have access to water. They had challenges getting that water supply. So, you know, making sure that we have the water so that we can support our public safety needs is also kind of one of those key components that I think we sometimes take for granted. So as many of you probably know, the population continues to grow. Wake County is projected to double by two thousand and seventy, and with that comes an increasing demand for water supply, which is also anticipated to more than double. In addition, this growth will have resulting loss of open space, forests, and agriculture. We also, as part of this plan, looked at future weather extremes and climate conditions. And so we can, we are projected to have increasing temperatures, higher temperatures, more droughts, and more flooding. And so, you know, we're already seeing some of this as we'll have longer stretches between precipitation events, but when we do get them, they're going to be higher intensity, and that can result in this localized flooding that we've seen recently. So all of this has real-world impacts, and these are just some of the headlines that, you know, have taken place in the news as a result of some of these impacts. I mentioned the kind of the forever chemicals that have been, you know, documented in the Cape for River, and and we, the water supply and utilities are working hard to get ahead and have the treatment to treat these. But again, we need to be prepared. I mentioned Tropical Storm Chantel and the impacts in Orange County and Chatham County. And I don't know if any of you recall, but in two thousand and seventeen, U N C Chapel Hill had to shut down their whole campus because they did not have access to water, and there was a concern that they would not be able to respond should fire or a public safety concern come up. And I mentioned artificial intelligence and the the data centers and kind of the stress that can play on water supply demands. If you look at different parts of the country, Columbus, Ohio, Texas, some of these areas are already really seeing strains on their water supplies. So again, trying to be proactive on that. And even just the ability to support residential development and, again, industry, you know, if we don't have water, we're not going to be able to continue that process. And that has resulted, you know, in areas like Arizona, they've actually had to limit their, some of their development. So with this context and with all of this in mind, in two thousand and twenty-two, the Wake County Board of Commissioners approved the Wake County One Water Plan. This is a fifty-year water plan, and as Leah mentioned, it's a holistic approach to One Water. So it's not just looking at surface water or drinking water. It's looking at stormwater. It's looking at wastewater. It's looking at groundwater. It's looking at all these pieces and recognizing it's all connected. It also is looking to, very closely tied to, I'm sure most of you have heard of Plan Wake, Wake County's comprehensive plan. So it's been developed hand-in-hand with that plan and and those objectives. So we want to integrate it with both, you know, development, future transportation plans, land use plans, and really build on the strengths and the plans that are already out there. We don't want to recreate the wheel. We want to support and and help move the good work that's taking place forward. And again, just make sure that we protect this limited natural resource. I mentioned community as and partnership is a big focus of this plan. So from the beginning, we focused on trying to engage our stakeholders, engage our communities. So this has taken a lot of different forms. We've had two countywide public surveys that have reached more than twenty-eight hundred folks in total. We have had a number of technical workshops. Leah and the municipal partners and the the Wake County Water Partnership have attended multiple meetings just to bring their kind of subject matter expertise and knowledge of water and their area of expertise to help formulate strategies to move forward in the plan. We've also met with the community to better understand, you know, what is, what are the community concerns. We've met with agricultural, you know, the Home Builders Association, Raleigh Chamber. Again, all of these sectors have water in their day-to-day lives in a different way or have a different need for water. So we want to make sure we understand all of those perspectives. So we started this project in two thousand and twenty-two with kickoff of a Vision and Goal Summit. Really, in two thousand and twenty-two, we focused and took a deep dive on technical assessments. So we really dug into the data. We had a team that helped us look at, again, the wastewater utilities, municipal utilities, looked at the groundwater assessment, stormwater. And so we kind of looked at all of those components of water in detail. And then we took all of that information to really help us inform strategies. As I mentioned, we had a number of technical workshops to help us develop these strategies. And then we had community input sessions and public surveys to see, okay, well, these are some of the strategies that we've, we're proposing as part of this plan. What would you support? Because if the, you know, if the community and our stakeholders don't support it, it's not going to be successful. This is a collaborative plan, and we need everybody to be on board. So based on all of these strategies, we developed four primary focus areas that we can group these strategies in. The first is optimize water supply. And so that is really, again, focusing on maximizing the value of water. And so thinking about water reuse, using non-potable water for things like washing your car or watering your lawn. You don't need potable water for those uses. So how can we better prepare ourselves so that we can reuse water and and make the most of the water, the potable water supplies? I'll say again, I mentioned the importance of partnerships and building on the collaborations that already exist. Triangle Water Supply Partnership is a is a collaboration of the utilities throughout the Triangle that have been working together for years. They have, they are also working on a fifty-year plan and forward-thinking and really doing great work on regional partnerships to make sure as a region, you know, that we're not siloed in how we manage water, but that these utilities are working together and backing each other up. So, you know, we know that this is taking place. We want to continue to support that and also consider groundwater as part of that discussion as well. Water quality and hydrology improvements are another focus area. A lot of these are more applications that you might see residents and day-to-day projects that folks could incorporate. So you may have heard of rain gardens or green stormwater infrastructure, which are nature, or nature-based solutions, which are practices that really mimic nature but help slow down stormwater runoff, help clean it, and help make it cleaner before it gets to the streams, and help mitigate some of that localized flooding. So, you know, one of the trees and increasing tree canopy would be another example of these water quality and hydrology improvements. These are examples of projects, and what we really try to do with these is have strategies that have multiple benefits. So not only do they provide water quality, they provide a community benefit. They provide green space, and they provide air quality benefits. So how can we implement strategies that are able to kind of meet multiple goals and objectives? A third focus area is land conservation and preservation, and this includes open space, you know, for protecting forest land and existing forests, but also agricultural land. Again, we want to try and, to the extent possible, kind of keep that closed-loop economy and and support our agriculture. And so we want to support the farmland preservation plan and support the the local and county parks, recreation, open space efforts to protect this land. It's a lot easier to protect it rather than restore it and retrofit it after it's been impacted. And then finally, flood resilience is a is a kind of the fourth focus area. And this includes a slew of strategies that covers everything from just increased education and outreach for the public on how to respond and be well-prepared for flooding, as well as making sure that our dams are safe and resilient, and flip lane mapping. So all of these pieces, you know, again, to make sure that we are better prepared. So all of this is going to require everybody working together. And we hope that by implementing the suite of strategies through this plan, we'll be able to increase resilience and mitigate some of the impacts that we are projected to see in this fifty-year timeline. So mitigate some of the stormwater runoff and volume and flooding that we're seeing. We, we know, we expect that there will be an increased vulnerability to groundwater. And so that could have impact on private well owners, as well as the base flow to our streams. So some of these practices, like the green stormwater infrastructure I mentioned, can help recharge groundwater. So that can help mitigate some of those impacts. And then also, again, thinking about how we can focus to collaborate now to protect open space before before it's lost. So there's a lot of different moving parts to water management in the county. And so lots of different folks have lots of different roles. So Wake County, as I'm sure you know, regulates private wells, onsite wastewater or septic systems. We also regulate stormwater in the the county jurisdiction and have inner local agreements with several of the smaller municipalities. And then, of course, we have the Parks and Open Space Program. Municipalities, you know, we do have five major water utility provider across the county, as well as wastewater utilities. And then several of the utilities also have their own stormwater programs. Again, Wake County supports some of the smaller utilities, but, you know, Garner, I know, has their own stormwater program, and parks and open space. So all of these entities, we're kind of managing in our own, in our own ways, but we know that water crosses jurisdictional boundaries. So we need to be kind of collaborating on solutions and working together as we think of these strategies. And then we also have private management for, you know, community wells and community wastewater systems. There's a large portion of the county that is also dependent on those. So, you know, one, one of these groups alone isn't going to be able to accomplish these goals. It's going to, it's a matrix that's going to require all of us working together, as well as that individual role that the public can play and on their property as well. You've heard me mention several times the Wake County Water Partnership. This is, again, just a breakdown to kind of show you the makeup of that group. Again, we're grateful to Garner for its ongoing participation. And this is really, this has been the foundation of developing this plan, and we see this as the foundation for moving this plan forward. So we currently have subcommittees that we anticipate, you know, continuing to move forward in these focus areas to help advance these strategies. So what do we need from you? We're really just asking for you to help us identify opportunities and advance these strategies within the focus areas with, within Garner and with the Water Partnership. Continue to have Garner represented and engaged at the Water Partnership, as well as in these focus groups and and work groups that are going to come out to implement these strategies. We are not asking for funding for the plan at this point. We are gonna, at the, there's going to be several organizational-type strategies, and then the work groups will help prioritize and decide, you know, how to move forward the individual strategies within those those focus areas. So we're asking for engagement, subject matter expertise from from Garner, as well as awareness in the community. A big part of Wake One Water and is just to increase awareness of water resources. So that, again, you know, it's easy to take it for granted when we have it, but we want to make everybody aware when they drink that glass of water, you know, when we, we have the rainfall, and what can we do on an individual basis to to conserve and protect that water resource? So our next steps, we currently have our public comment period for the draft plan. It's out for public review through October tenth. You could find it on our website, website, wake.gov/onewaterplan. We actually, if any of you are free tomorrow at noon for lunch, we're having a public webinar, just to provide an overview of the Wake One Water Plan. And we really, again, we want to hear, hear from the community and and hear the response to the plan, because in order for this to be successful, it's going to take all hands on deck. And it's all working together to 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 implement this plan. Then, once we receive comments through the draft plan process, we anticipate bringing this to Wake Board of Commissioners in early two thousand and twenty-six for final approval. And I'm happy to take any questions. I also just want to acknowledge our partners in developing the plan to date. Our consultants, Hazen and Sawyer, Tetra Tech, and Research Triangle Institute are all, have all contributed to the plan, as well as mention a tremendous number of hours and participation from municipalities and subject matter experts with the Water Partnership. So thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you so much for the great information. It's very, it's very good for me to hear that we have a dedicated team, your team, who's trying to look fifty years in the future on the big water, every kind of water. It's all integrated as water. And you're trying to take that perspective to keep us from from hitting the crisis as many other areas have been. So thank you very much for what you're doing. With that, I'll start with Mr. Matthews at this end and see what questions or comments council members might have.
Great presentation. We hear a lot of information or talk about some of the new AI and business coming that use an extremely large amount of water. Are y'all making provisions on that? Those data centers and what have you, I know they use a lot, and some communities are just staying away from it because they can't afford the water.
Yeah, it's a great question. And we actually, our plant, Wake County's planning department is actually just, we've heard from municipalities and others that are starting to get requests and interest from those interested in developing a data center. So these, we're starting a kind of a collaborative conversation to work together so that we can share information, kind of develop some regional, hopefully, standards and guidelines that we can all develop as a whole. I think we're very early in the process comparatively to some others in the country, which is a good place to be. And so I think, I think municipalities and county recognize this and realize it's a good time to talk and to share information and work together to make sure that we can have, get some guidelines in place. So those conversations are happening.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, Mr. Staley. In regards to future water sources, with falls and Western Wake County and Garnet County has Cape Fear River and so forth, I mean, what are one of the plans? At one time, the Little River Reservoir was going to be in Eastern Wake County. What are plans to, I mean, we're in doubling population, you're going to basically, I'm not saying double the usage, but it's going to be close to that. So what is that, will that be encompassed? Will that just be, this will help maybe to start the process of how you're, how we're going to gain future water sources? Because, I mean, we're not, we can't go out and make a river. So, I mean, what is the future of that, as far as future water reservoirs?
Well, I mentioned some of our partners that have been working on that. So the Triangle Water Supply Partnership includes, you know, Raleigh, Cary, Chatham County, Johnston County, and all of those partners. And they are actually working on a fifty-year water plan right now from that utility and municipal service right now. And I know, to your question of Little River, Raleigh has, is currently doing an alternative analysis to determine, you know, what is the best alternative. As I mentioned, pretty much every supplier is going to have, requires some form of expansion for either supply or treatment, but they are working and do have strategies and plans in place. They're kind of finalizing those strategies right now. And I would say, so with the One Water Plan, what we want to do, rather than, you know, recreate the work they're already doing with their models and their strong collaboration, we want to continue to watch that side of it, but also look at the groundwater side of it and these other pieces, and make sure that we can help encourage residents and others to do the part by offsetting the demand for potable water by those strategies like reuse and encouraging reclaimed water. So, you know, we are going to need some future water supplies, but we'd like to minimize that and use as many strategies as we can to kind of offset that future demand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer. Mr. Dallinger.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the AI and data center question. I'm glad y'all are looking at that, and then Mr. Matthews brought it up as well. Because a lot of times, these companies operate under the cover of non-disclosure agreements, and it gets very difficult for residents to figure out what's going on until it's too late. So I'm glad to hear you're all on top of that. My question sort of related to that is, in what you're doing, what is your hope to sort of raise awareness about the impacts? And are you going to be able to provide to a municipal, at a municipal level, potential impacts of certain scale of centers and the cost-benefit analysis? What's sort of your vision for that data center resource work?
So the discussions are literally just kicking off. We've had kind of our planners, our, the Wake County planners initiated a conversation just two weeks ago with the municipal planners kind of across the county. And so what we're doing right now is we're kind of in that data gathering phase. We've had, I believe Apex has had one area of interest submitted, and so we're, they're sharing the information that they've received. We're looking at areas like Loudoun County, Virginia, which is kind of a hub for a lot of these data centers. And we're trying to look, you know, at the pros and cons, right? Like, there's benefits, like we're dependent on AI, right? So what is that offset, right? You said cost-benefit. So we're going to look at both sides, but really, we're at the data, the gathering, data gathering stage, research phase, but trying to learn from others that have already experienced this and best practices from that as much as possible. And I think at the end of the day, what we'd again like to have is just some best practice and standard guidelines so that we are prepared and, you know, municipalities and county are ready when those requests come.
Another quick question I had was on flooding and stormwater management. Do you all collaborate and sort of have a compilation of best practices with regards to balancing stormwater needs and tree canopy preservation and open space preservation, those impacts and cost savings? Is there a resource for municipalities to tap into to kind of look at some of those best practices and that can actually save the town money in trying to do some of that work?
That's such a great question, and I will point to Leah because she is on the Green Stormwater Infrastructure, she's chair of the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Subcommittee with the Partnership, as I mentioned. So that group, several years ago, came together and decided to just compile information on best practices. So we try to update that yearly, and includes everything from policies and modeling to maintenance and case studies, examples, and research of, you know, both traditional kind of stormwater, as well as green stormwater infrastructure and how, you know, what's been effective and what's worked well for those that have implemented. So that is a resource that we're continuing to try to update. I will say, as part of the One Water Plan, and one of the strategies that the stormwater team kind of came up with was, they did want to come together and really, I think it exists in a lot of different forms and formats at different places, but a cost-benefit of analysis that's easier for designers and staff review to kind of share that information. So it's a lot easier to make that decision and have to do a lot easier at hand.
I think it'd be helpful to get some of those types of policy recommendations tied with some of those cost-benefit analysis with the town, but also the development community that benefit both relatively equally. We can accomplish multiple things at one time. You know, I think there's often an antagonistic relationship between what's best for the community and the environment and stormwater management and the development community. And I don't think enough time is spent looking at what the benefits are to both in doing some of these practices. So that'd be helpful.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. That's great points.
Yeah, thanks. As we continue to see, the new infrastructure is not just water, not just sewer, not just roads, but stormwater management is another key thing. We can use all the help we can get. So any resources, please send them to Leah and help us figure out how to be proactive on this.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Mr. Vance, questions, comments?
Just say, Mr. Staley, thank you for the thorough brief. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for bringing this, and we, I hope we have her number on speed dial. So thank you, Leah, and thank you, Ms. Dallinger.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now we move along to item D on our agenda, which is discussion items. These seem like they were kind of discussions, but here we go. The first one is Garner Youth Council, and our presenters are going to be our own Public Information Officer, Rick Mercer, and Bella Saltz.
Hey, good evening, Councilman. Mr. Mayor, it's good to see you. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Saltz in a few minutes, but I just want to do a quick background on this. We're here tonight to present a proposal to establish the Garner Youth Council, which we're pretty excited, pretty excited, very excited about. When Ms. Saltz joined us about, it was about nine months ago, I guess now, eight, nine months ago, she mentioned the idea of maybe establishing a youth council at the time. We thought, yeah, it's a great idea. Let's put that on a horizon. And then it came to be about late spring, early summer timeframe, and a gentleman, a young gentleman approached us about the same idea, and he met with us, and we were blown away by the way he was prepared, and he came with a really solid idea, and we thought, wow, this is, this is a sign. We got to, we got to, we got to jump on this, make this an initiative. So Ms. Saltz started doing, started doing a lot of background research on what some of our peer communities have done to establish one of these youth councils. We met with this young gentleman, who I'll introduce in a minute, again, and then after that, Ms. Saltz was able to put together a draft proposal. We met with the mayor, we met with the manager's office, they offered some feedback and lots of support. And so you're about to hear more about that proposal in its final form this evening and offer feedback and pose any questions you might have. So I'm about to step aside, but I did want to acknowledge Mr. Anish Pennumatcha, who is with us. He's a resident of the South Garner area. You attend, isn't it the Wake STEM Early College? Is that right? So we're excited to have him here. We've been excited to work with him so far and look forward to continuing to do so. And I think, I think there's a lot of good things that are going to come out of this initiative. So I'm going to step aside. Ms. Saltz will present to you, be able to receive any feedback or questions, and of course, Anish is here as well, so.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. As Rick mentioned, I'm here to present a proposal for the creation of a Garner Youth Council. The purpose of the Garner Youth Council is to give local youth meaningful ways to volunteer and engage with their local government while also providing a platform to advise town council on issues that matter to young people in the community. It's important to note that this council is not meant to replace any existing youth groups, but rather to collaborate with them and amplify their efforts. It's about creating a space where youth from all backgrounds can come together, learn from one another, and contribute to their town. As Rick mentioned, this idea was started by Anish recently, who approached the town with interest in starting a youth council. After meeting with him and hearing his ideas and vision, I conducted more research by speaking with other municipalities across North Carolina, including Apex, Hickory, Cary, Fuquay Varina, and more. Each of these towns has a thriving youth council that plays a meaningful role in their community. Through further research, I discovered the North Carolina State Youth Council, which is administered through the North Carolina Department of Administration. It's a statewide organization that gives young people a voice in their communities and in local government. It's made up of youth councils from across North Carolina that work together to identify issues facing young people, propose solutions, and develop programs that make a positive impact on their community. There would be an opportunity for the Garner Youth Council to become a chartered state youth council. This would allow our youth to collaborate with peers from across the state, attend leadership conferences, and bring back new ideas to our town. Being a part of a statewide network would also give our youth a broader perspective on civic issues and help them see how local government fits into the bigger picture. Anish's ideas, research, and conversations with other municipalities helped us understand best practices and create a basic structure for the Garner Youth Council. The Garner Youth Council would run from August to May, aligning with the school year. It would be youth-led with a maximum of thirty members, supported by one main staff advisor, myself, and additional staff as needed. Membership would be free and open to rising eighth through twelfth graders who live and/or attend school in Garner. We're looking for students who are curious about local government and passionate about making a difference in their community. One of the requirements to become a chartered state youth council is to have an executive board. The Garner Youth Council Executive Board would include a president, vice president, secretary, marketing and outreach coordinator, and service coordinator. Elections would be held in May each year, and terms would last one year, August to May. This structure not only ensures accountability and organization, but it also gives the memberships, the members' leadership experience. The Garner Youth Council would meet once a month to discuss upcoming development opportunities, volunteer opportunities, and work on their year-long project, and discuss any other matters as needed. Development opportunities would include presentations, interactive demonstrations from town staff to help members understand how the town operates. This could also serve as a time for staff to receive feedback from the youth on any projects. Youth councils will have, youth council members will have the chance to attend three to four development opportunities each year. Members would also volunteer at town and downtown events, whether it's assisting with setup or cleanup, participating in the town litter sweep, or tabling an event to recruit future youth council members. Importantly, the youth council would also serve an advisory role, providing insight on issues that affect the local youth. This can generally be done by staying in touch with elected and government officials, bringing them ideas and concerns of the youth that are within their realms of operation. And finally, each year, members would work on a year-long project. This could be anything from launching a recycling initiative to creating a youth resource guide. The goal is to identify a need in the community and address it in a meaningful, lasting way. The next steps include opening an application for a one-month period and begin promoting the youth council through schools, churches, social media, and local youth organizations. A parent-youth interest meeting would also be held at the beginning of the open application period to answer any questions and provide more information on the youth council. The first meeting of the Garner Youth Council would take place this fall, and the rest of this year through May would serve as a pilot year. This year will not have an executive board, so the focus can remain on building a strong foundation. A few of the tasks that members will work on this first year include finalizing the youth council structure and creating bylaws, testing different formats for development opportunities, volunteering at events, attending a town council meeting, recruiting members for future years, and planning service projects and initiatives that can be carried forward. So the first full official year with an executive board would take place August 2026 to May 2027. In closing, youth councils have proven to be a powerful tool for civic engagement. It gives young people a seat at the table, fosters civic responsibility, and strengthens the connection between youth and local government. Thank you for your time, and Rick and I are here to answer any questions.
Okay.
Yes.
That's great. It's always, it's always exciting to hear about what I call a grassroots movement, where someone in the community, someone other than the paid professionals, come up with an idea and push it. And amazingly, this one came up to coincide with something you and Rick had already been talking about, youth council. So it really seems to be getting a lot of impetus from a lot of directions. We've seen our high schools join together to have mock town council meetings here. This is related, but not the same, not to replace, but to help build on all of that. We keep asking ourselves, where do tomorrow's leaders come from? They come from today, and we need to do everything we can to help today for other people who will be taking our places as we move ahead. I'm very excited about the whole idea, the whole concept. And with that, I think I'll just see what council members have to ask or what comments. We'll start back at Mr. Vance's end with questions or comments.
Yes, well, thank you. I tell you what, I'm excited about this and understand that this was a spark from Anish?
Yes.
Anish? Can he stand beside you? I just wanted to make sure, I mean, we get a visual on this young man here. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I'm just interested in what motivated you to want to establish this, this youth council?
So basically, a few months ago, I came to a meeting like this, and I was really interested in how the town council worked and how local government was going through the motions of developing things in the community that I didn't really know about. So I wanted to sort of look into it, and I knew that there was youth councils in other cities like Apex or Raleigh, and I noticed that there wasn't one in Garner, so I wanted to start one. And I also felt like this would be really great, especially now, because there's a lot of people coming in from different ethnic groups, and Garner's becoming more and more diverse over these years. And this Garner Youth Council will be a great way to sort of bring everyone together, especially the youth who don't really have, I mean, much say in the community, or I haven't really seen much stuff coming from the youth. That's why I feel like the youth council will sort of bring that together and also implement some of these other programs that haven't been heard of as often in the community that the youth can take place in.
Thank you so much for your initiative. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dallinger.
I would just say, good job. You know, you don't speak up, no one's going to hear you. They still might not listen, but they're going to hear you. So congratulations on putting yourself out there, coming in here, seeing us do what we do, and saying, I can be a part of that, we can be a part of that. Keep pushing forward. Looking forward to see what you all bring back to us and what you guys do, what your issues are, what you guys are concerned about. There's no better time than right now to be involved in local politics. Those two guys sitting behind you right there, these folks up here, help them do their jobs and do them well. So that's the power of local government. So thanks so much for what you're doing and looking forward to having you involved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Behringer.
This is exciting. I just had someone this morning ask me if we have a youth council in Garner. So little did we know that I can go back. So little did we know that I can go back to them and say, well, as a matter of fact, yes, we do. You are our leaders, and we have to start today to get you ready for tomorrow. And what better way than to become involved in the local government? So thank you for your work and look forward to seeing projects and results.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Anish, how old are you?
I'm 15.
15. That's great. How I got interested in government was years ago. We didn't have computers. So when you wanted to read something, I read the encyclopedia, and I got into, started reading about the presidents, and that's what got me interested in government was reading about the presidents of the United States. And so you're going a different route, but it's the same type of thing, the interest that you have in government. So I congratulate you for that and look forward to, y'all, hopefully get plenty of applications, many applicants. Ms. Saltz, this will all be managed, and they'll meet at town hall or our town facility, right?
Yes, we were considering moving at different, hosting meetings at different town facilities, but yes, as of right now.
Okay, that's good. That's great. Thanks again for your idea.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
It's really exciting to see the youth, and you're right, we are a melting pot. We've had opportunities this weekend to go to events with so many international people moving into the Garner area. And this is, as the mayor said, this is going to be your town one day. We'll be in a rest home, we're waiting for you somewhere down the road. But this is exciting. And with Mr. Mercer back there, I know that he will promote this on our website and create that where people can know what's going on. And our website is very good because more and more people are signing on to that. And so your message, you get out there, and I'm looking forward to see what's coming up with you guys and getting feedback from you and things we need to know about. We expect you to come in here and tell us, say, here's what our youth concerns are now with our town. This is going on, that's going on, and you have our ear, and we're behind you. So good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, our mission as a council this evening was to provide feedback to staff. I think you've heard some very positive comments, some real enthusiasm for the project here. I particularly like the idea that you're going with a pilot year. We know this is going to be baby steps. It won't be full-blown this year, but we're going to take steps to move ahead going forward. It's also the directive for the council here to decide if we want to add this to the proposed resolution to the consent agenda for next week at the regular. And I certainly feel like we should. If anybody's got any other questions or comments between now and then, we know where to get ahold of Rick and his team over there to help us perfect this and get it off to the best possible launch. So having heard all the positive comments, I think it's safe to say that by nod of the head, we're saying, yes, please move ahead with this project. I want to hear some, sir. I want to hear those heads rattling. Yes, yes, there you go. Thank you. Great job. I love you, Rick. Thank you so much, Anish. This is very exciting stuff. Let's go full speed ahead, let's see it on the consent agenda, and then we're anxious to get updates as we go along. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us along to discussion item number two, just as interesting, almost as exciting, golf carts, golf carts, ordinance. And we were going to be calling on our police chief, Chris Adams, and Captain Castileen to tell us what's going on here, what our options are, and what kind of things we should be thinking about.
Yes, sir, Mayor, council. Thank you for letting us be here tonight and talk about this. We've done a lot of research on this topic, and I believe coming into this research opportunity, we had some thoughts on what other municipalities were doing. But I think Captain Castileen's done a really good job with compiling all this research. And so he's going to give you that presentation now and talk about what he's found and talk about the options going forward. And also, we will have, we've discussed this, and we also have a recommendation as well. So without further ado, I'll let him get started.
Good. Thank you, council, town manager, and future leader in our community for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. Like Chief Adams said, I'm here to talk about some research and review that was done regarding golf carts and ordinance in a public safety review. So that involved more than just a conversation with me and the chief, even though we have a combined 52 years of public safety experience. It involved reaching out to our peers, you know, throughout North Carolina to include those municipalities within Wake County, some of similar size of Garner, some larger, and some smaller. And so I looked at first, you know, what's the purpose of having an ordinance in general? And is to promote public health, public safety, you know, quality of life within the community? And it's also for looking at community growth and progressiveness. And, but we want to also make sure that when we have ordinances in place, that they align with applicable state laws that are already in place. Some key considerations that we looked at during this research and review were risk and crash potential, you know, that could occur. Traffic management, you know, the normal flow of traffic in and out while traveling in our community. And then town staff workload, you know, any type of ordinance that's put in place, one that especially that has regulations and an enforcement part of it, will have a, in registration, will have staff that's needed to work on all those different components. And then regulation and enforcement. In enforcement, you know, falls in the realm of the police department, you know, there's ways that we have to enforce these ordinances if they're put in place. Before I go any further into the safety concerns, I want to clearly define a couple terms that are going to be used during this presentation that kind of are similar but very different, and that's golf carts and low-speed vehicles. You know, what are the differences between those two things? And I'll try to, I'll simplify it because it's simplified so I understand, so I definitely know you'll understand. Golf carts are just that, right? Made, a vehicle made to be on a golf course, traveling down, you know, a road on a golf course, and to carry the equipment of a golfer. And then we'd go to low-speed vehicles. They may look like a golf cart, but they have federal and state-regulated safety equipment that allows them to be registered by the DMV. So we'll think golf cart, just traditional golf cart, no safety features made for a golf course, low-speed vehicle, lots of safety features allowed to travel on the roadway. So as I spoke with my peers in law enforcement and public safety, a lot of those that had tremendous amounts of years of traffic safety experience, we talked about their concerns in their municipalities about golf carts on the roadways. And these are some of the stuff that came up, accidents. The golf carts are not made to have the impact of a crash. So when they are involved in a crash with vehicles and pedestrians, serious injury can result from both. Ejections, passengers, because golf carts don't have seat belts and restraints, passengers can be thrown from carts during sudden stops or sharp turns. And then rollover risk, just the fear makeup of the golf carts itself makes it unbalanced. So any improper handling of this cart could result in a rollover, especially during changing in terrain, whether it's from a roadway going into a parking lot or just a general roadway transition could result in a rollover of that vehicle. And then size. So they're much smaller and slower, so them operating on a roadway brings in some different dynamics. I think as muscle memory and experienced drivers, we're used to seeing and visualizing in our minds, you know, a vehicle, a passenger vehicle, a truck that's on the roadway. So this would be a new component that would have to be trained in the minds of drivers. So while reviewing the different municipalities and what they use or don't use for golf carts, they took three different types of approaches. Permitted and regulated, meaning they had an ordinance and it was regulated. Restricted or prohibited, meaning they didn't have an ordinance, they relied on state statute for low-speed vehicles, or they just restricted golf carts to subdivisions. And the majority of those communities were, the subdivisions were a golf community. And then transitional and phasing out. So with transitional and the phasing out, whereas these were places that have golf, call it golf cart ordinances, but we're moving away from that and going with the state law or moving away from the golf cart ordinance and restricting it to just subdivisions. So I'll go through some of those, just so you have a general idea of what permitted and regulated means. Permitted, regulated ordinance is a permit is needed, required to operate that golf cart on the roadway. They must do a safety inspection and have special safety features as designated by the municipality and usually inspected by a police department. They must have insurance, and then they have age and license requirements where the ordinances were in place. Most were 18 plus, there were some that were 16, but all required you to have a driver's license. And then operate on the roadway, meaning that they're able to operate on the roadway and roadways of less than 35 miles an hour. And then time of operation. A majority of the places that did have ordinances would now allow operations after dusk or at nighttime. So restricted or prohibited, no golf carts allowed on the roadway, restricted to just subdivisions, and then referring to the state law and regulations of low-speed vehicle, which I'll cover here later in this presentation. And then those municipalities doing the transitional or phasing out. They're phasing out of having that ordinance and moving just strictly following the state law, and then restricting to just subdivisions. And those communities are restricting to golf, golf community-related subdivisions. So I've talked about this, North Carolina, this low-speed vehicle. Well, there's a low-speed statute, General Statute 20-121.1. And some of the key points in that statute is, a low-speed vehicle is a four-wheeled vehicle with a top speed of 20 to 25 miles an hour, must be titled, must be registered, and insured, just like a passenger vehicle, that each of us drive down the road, and the driver must hold a valid driver's license. Traditional golf carts do not meet the low-speed vehicle standards unless they are modified. And with those modifications meeting in order to be registered, they would have to have headlights, taillights, stop lamps, turn signals, rearview mirrors, parking brakes, windshield, seat belts, and vehicle identification number, all federal and state-regulated safety features for vehicles to be registered. Under the statute, where can these low-speed vehicles be operated? They may be operated on roadways posted of 35 miles an hour or less, but may cross over roads at an intersection. So they may cross over a road that is 45 to continue on that 35. So I just talked about the law and what's in the books for motor vehicle law. Now, what are some options as looking at an ordinance for a municipality? And you'll find that they're very similar to the law, which I just read. So no operation on roadways greater than 35 miles an hour, but may cross over that road to continue on a 35. Must carry liability insurance. No reckless or careless driving. Operation must be 16 plus, and like I said earlier, most places that have ordinances is 18 plus, and then the driver must carry a license when they're driving. Sounds very similar to the state statute because it follows those types of regulations. There's operation of time restraints. Like I said, most places that have ordinances do not allow operations at night to reduce the safety risk. Prohibited from sidewalks, trails, and greenways, just allowing to operate on those roadways that are 35 mile an hour or less. And then no towing of people or vehicles, yes, I guess it happens. And then not exceeding the manufacturer seating capacity. I got a family of six, doesn't mean I can put all six people from my family on a golf cart that only holds, supposedly only have four people on. And then definitely no alcohol while driving. Safety equipment options that are in ordinances. Seat belts, headlights, brake lights, turn signals, reflective signs, and signals, following along the lines of some of the recommendations with the statute that's already in place. So with the ordinances comes a registration and an inspection, which usually falls on the police department in most municipalities. People are required to register the vehicle with the municipality, must show proof of insurance and ownership of the vehicle, and potentially in some places, sign a waiver releasing the town of liability. And then they must carry those documents at all times while operating. And continually with that, most places have a sticker, like a registration, and it must be visible, and it usually lasts for about a year. Any lost or stolen stickers are at the owner's cost, and all fees are paid before operating, just like trying to register your vehicle, you're paying those fees upfront before being able to operate that on the roadway. And then there had to be a discussion about a fee structure, or a fee structure. Discussion would be needed to determine the different costs associated with that. And then there comes the enforcement and penalties related to ordinances. Of course, all violations are subject to North Carolina vehicle laws since they're on the roadway, but then there's civil fines for ordinance violations that would have to be set up, and then parking fines related to that. So we'd have to create a parking, where can we park these vehicles because they're different from passenger vehicles, and we have a separate ordinance related to parking, and then the enforcement of that and the different fees related to parking in the place you're not supposed to. And then all DWI laws do apply to golf cart operations. So some key public safety considerations to take into account. Traditional golf carts lack the crash protection required and do not have the safety equipment, and they're not eligible to be registered by the Department of Motor Vehicles. Low-speed vehicles under state law must be registered, titled, insured, meet federal and state standards such as lighting and seat belts, mirrors, bins, et cetera. Cannot operate on roadways less than 35 miles an hour. And supporting the slow-speed vehicle statute does provide residents with a regulated alternative for short trips within the community. So after compiling all this information, after having discussions beyond just discussions between me and the chief and our large amount of experience in public safety, but discussions with our peers throughout the state, and a lot of those having a large amount, lots of years of public safety and traffic-related experience, our recommendation is to continue to rely on the statute that's already in place, which is the General Statute 20-121.1, the low-speed vehicle. And why? Because it ensures consistency with state law, and it promotes public safety. It's the safest option. The vehicles would be, have the safety requirements that is federally and state-regulated, that's been vetted by the state through the Department of Transportation and the professionals and experts that work in those departments. And then it also avoids conflicting and duplicate regulations. Having an ordinance in a state law that kind of mirror each other could create some confusion. And then it reduces- And then it reduces the town's liability exposure. The exposure, the state statute is already in place. So we should rely, our recommendation is to continue to rely on that statute. And if you have any questions for me or Chief Adams, we'd be happy to answer them.
Excellent. A great presentation, a great amount of research. And yes, we will ask council members in order here about questions and comments. We'll get one question from each and then if we need to roll back around, because I have questions and comments too. But we'll start with Mr. Matthews this time, and I appreciate him bringing up the idea of examining this because it is an issue these days. What is a golf cart? What are the alternatives? Blah, blah, blah. So with that, I'll pass the microphone to Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you guys digging into this. I know when I presented it to you, you like to have a heart attack, but this happened a few years ago. So it's kind of nothing new here. But just to make a few comments in general, low speed vehicle, they can have the same issues. Somebody ramming into them, turning over and what have you, you know, it's just a low speed vehicle with some extra things added to it and I totally understand that. But you know, we're a unique town and I thought about this long and hard. So my first visit was down to the town of Benson, North Carolina. And there were a lot of golf carts out this past week, even though it was raining down there for their mules day thing. And I know those guys have been having just a golf cart ordinance for probably close to 50 years. And so I stopped by the police station and got their list, their ordinance as well as their requirements. And I think I made everybody a copy of that, including attorney town manager as well as the police department. So y'all seen what the town of Benson does. And they said that more communities go by, stop by, pick up their information because they have done it for such a long time. And so they said the local ordinance, what's required again for them, it can be electric or gas golf carts, but they require a rear view mirror and seat belts for the required amount of seatings. That has to be there. And also a orange placard required for the rear of it. So somebody's coming up behind it, they can see, see that. And it can be only used in, there are streets down there in Benson, I think all over about 35 miles per hour, unless you get on I-95 or 50 or something. And, and that would be the same thing I was proposing for Garner, that 35 mile an hour, but you can cross over a highway 50 or what have you at a stoplight to continue. But you gotta adhere to all the ordinances. Also, the liability insurance was required, just like automobile. And so many things are similar in nature to the, the LSVs. But I want to just make it unique for our town. Everybody in Garner is not going to rush out and get a golf cart. Would I use one? Yes, I would because you know, I live in town, it's 35 mile an hour streets. And a lot of other towns use them as mentioned. And so, but far as the registration fee and they got different numbers, I'm thinking $50 or better. And don't have to be like Wendell, $300. You gotta pay right up front for the first three years. And that's why they have no golf carts probably down there. The dollar figure scares them off. And it's meant to be something unique to 18 year olds or older too. And far as parking, way they do it down there, you park in a parking place, but you gotta park in it like you would a car and go by the law. So, so again, I thought this would be something unique for our town. It wouldn't be for everybody. And, and as I talked to attorney, far as registration, we have an online service that they could go online and register all of this. Of course, it would require an inspection by law enforcement. And but the farthest paperwork could be all done online, simplifying that procedure. So we can make it as difficult as we want to, or we can do like the town of Benson has done for 50 years and kept it simple, a local ordinance and not making it all that complicated. So I know we'll have to vote on it. And so I just want to lay it all out there. And if it passes, it does, if it don't, I've, I've been shot down before and I'll live with it. But keep in mind, we have bicycles out there, all over the streets. We have little scooters out there, people are driving at low speeds. It could be hit and killed. There's a lot of stuff out there. So you know, I don't, I wouldn't classify it as uniquely just something on its own. But just as a local ordinance, keeping it simple, just for the city limits of Garner, just like they've done down there for close to 50 years. So I appreciate everything's been brought out, I really do. And Chief, your stars look good. I'll butter you up a little bit. But, but I'd appreciate everybody's support on this. We'll see how it goes. And I think we're a unique little town. We've got Fireman's Day coming up. Man, what a good way to go up there and start trying to find that traffic, drive my golf cart up there or whatever's going on. So let's keep it simple and let's have it. I appreciate everybody's support on this. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, and Mr. Singleton.
So you're recommending that we stay with the current ordinance with the low speed vehicles as it is. Now, they reckon, now they have to be on streets 35 miles an hour or less. Now, can that be state roads or has to be local roads? I mean, 35 miles an hour less is, you know, highway 50, you can go on Particember Drive, you can go on Vandora.
So any road that's 35 miles an hour or less?
Any mile, any road, okay, for the state ordinance.
Yes, it's the state statute.
State statute, so any road 35 and less, okay. In some of these other towns and reading it, some of them talk about just local roads. So is that, is that something, I'm sorry, your attorney is going to give me some legal jargon here.
I just wanted to say that the planning department has prepared a map of, this is all the streets and the town limits by speed limit. So you can see the blue and dark green are the ones that would be 25 or 35 miles per hour or less.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Singleton?
And the low speed vehicles that did require, that doesn't require registration with a town. No, I'm sorry, it does require, does it or doesn't?
A low speed vehicle would require registration through the DMV, just like a passenger vehicle.
Okay.
Out the town.
All right. That's all for now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Behrger, comments, questions?
Yes, I do. Do you have statistics for rate of accidents with golf carts as opposed to rate of accidents with LSVs?
I do not have that with me, no.
Okay. I have a lot of concerns about the safety. I was, you know, Garner Road is a 35 mile an hour speed limit through town. And this afternoon, somebody sat on my bumper all the way from AMG's down to Creeks Road and then zoomed around me to get in front of me to stop at the stoplight. That is very concerning to me because people don't care. They're not as careful as they should be and it, it concerns me. Safety is my biggest issue and I'm nervous about this.
Understandable. Mr. Deliger?
Yeah, I think the recommendation to stick with the state guidelines makes a lot of sense. I think I've more than once in the past year been passed on Buffalo Road. Biding my own business, going to speed limit, crossing double yellow lines. And there was a, you know, crash last year, pickup truck on the road. I think Garner's got a weird mix of roads. I mean, I get concerned too about crossing like, when people aren't used to seeing something, it's more dangerous because it's novel. And you got Aversboro and Timber, probably the most dangerous intersection in town, where under the statute you could cross, it's not even safe for cars. So I do have some concerns about the drive ability, safety matrix of the town and the layout of the town and how some of our 35 mile an hour roads intersect with some of our other roads and how people speed on our 35 mile an hour roads. We have stretches of Timber Drive that are 35, that people can drive 35 on. So I'm less concerned about the, the people who are driving the golf cart and trying to be safe and being mindful versus everyone else that's around them driving how they're driving. And if they don't respect a car, they're not going to respect a golf cart. And if they're not expecting it, it makes it more dangerous for those folks too. And so I'm nervous about it anyway. But I'm getting more nervous when you start reducing some of the safety features of the equipment, you know, the vehicle, the smaller vehicles. And the liability element of that as well. I wouldn't want us to open ourselves up to any more liability than we need to. And then there's sort of the enforcement logistics of it too that go in with that. So I've got a lot of concerns with doing anything different than the state.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vance.
Yes, Captain Castillon. In reference to the municipalities that had their ordinances, their own town ordinances or municipal ordinances, and now they're changing or adjusting to the state statute. Can you, do you have any reason why that, why they're making that adjustment?
Yeah, so it would be nice to have like data, right? Be a data approach to that question, but it's each municipality collects their information differently, right? They may not, they may receive a call from their dispatch that says there's like an issue with a golf cart. And in those notes, it may just say golf cart. Then the officer responds to it, handles it and then closes the call out, doesn't do any more documentation related to that, right? Garner, we do do a step forward. We document each interaction that we have a person with a person with some specific details other than just what's given from a caller over the phone, if that makes sense, right? So some of the, the concerns are, and they're moving away because they said we have this state statute in place. Why don't we just follow that? Why do we have a separate ordinance? And then they're moving away to, because they're having calls from, this is from word of mouth, right? So I wish I could just pull up reports and produce that data. We had to, you know, go meet with people in person, talk to chiefs, talk to traffic safety supervisors over the phone to ask them about, you know, specific questions. And a lot of times, you know, hey, can you provide us, you know, with the data and all that? Well, we really don't have it, you know, but, but I know, you know, this, was there anything, you know, that really shocked your conscience, you know, stuff like that. So I say all that because I would like to provide you with the list of that data. It's just not available. But from those word of mouth in those meetings, they were wanting to reduce the calls that they're getting, the complaints that they're getting. And from having kids, you know, a lot of majority was we got kids riding on golf carts down the street, you know, all the time. And by restricting that just to just the state regulated, the law, the state statute, it would reduce the amount of vehicles that are supposed to be on the roadway. So they were also, when they had like, you know, was it, they, some of the issues they were going, having was that, that golf cart, is it under their ordinance or is it under the state statute? You know, and are we looking for a tag? Is it there? You know, where's the sticker at? Does it have a sticker? And it's just, they felt, they felt that it was best practice to move to just subdivisions and not roadways that are commonly traveled all day long or going to strictly the state statute out of hoping it would reduce the amount of carts, I guess, and complaints that they would receive.
Okay. Thank you.
Hope that answered some of your questions.
Yeah, well, just to kind of follow up on that question and even on Mr. Matthews' question about Benson, they seem to be prolific down there are these, these four wheeled vehicles that are not cars, whether they're golf carts, LSVs, I'm not sure. But I think maybe you had been to Mule Day recently and saw some of these things down there. What was your perception of, or does it have a lot of golf carts? Are they low speed vehicles? What's going on?
So I don't know if it was just because I was in that particular area, but there was a lot of the low speed vehicles or side by sides, I would call them. There's jacked up, a little bit bigger, have the plates on them than just the traditional, the golf carts were being used by the, it looked for me, it looked like the staff or the parade. But it may have just been where I was. I didn't really, I was just at a small section of the parade to watch my daughters.
Hard to say. Okay. Well, I also want to share one, one experience I had over the past week with two different subdivisions in Garner, both in the city limits and both taking opposite views of what they thought that the rules were. The first one, I'll call them the good example, and I'll call their name Auburn Village. And I went there and on the way in, I saw a nice looking vehicle of some kind over there. When I got in, one of the residents I was talking to, I said, tell me about golf carts. That's a nice looking golf cart. She said, that's not a golf cart. That's a low speed vehicle. It might look like a golf cart, but if, go back and look at it and you'll see the license tag on it. So we learned early on here in Auburn Village what the state law is. And the state law is if you're going to ride something that looks like a golf cart, it has to be a low speed vehicle, it has to be registered, it has to meet these requirements. It has to comply with the state law. And now that's what we do and we like them. Okay? So I understood that. And then I, then I heard from a couple of my friends who live in Eagle Ridge, 800 homes, golf course out there, it's a golf course community. And it must have, how long ago has that been there? 30 years? It's been a long time. And I think they got in the habit of driving their golf carts to the course and playing golf. And that, that's great. But now in the meantime, they seem to have forgotten there's a state law. And according to my friends who are out there, they often see children driving these around on the streets who are clearly not 16 years old, even to the extent of having four or five other kids in the car with them and one riding on the roof just for the fun of it. So they've kind of lost perspective. And that's why I'm glad Mr. Matthews had brought this up. So we can talk about what are the rules? What's the current rules, which is the state statute that you mentioned. And even my friend in Eagle Ridge, he said, is a kid going to have to get killed or maybe just paralyzed before we start enforcing the rule or reminding them what it is? So he, a couple of different residents had real concerns about golf cart use in their subdivision. And I always appreciate Mr. Matthews when he says, keep it simple. You gotta keep it simple for me too. And I think I'm understanding your recommendation, keep it simple by having only one set of rules for these kinds of vehicles, which is the state statute. Is that your recommendation?
Yes, that's a recommendation after the public safety review.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions. Let's run back around. This is an important topic. We need to think about it and think it through. Let's start back over with Mr. Matthews for other questions or observations.
Mr. Singleton was raising his hand when you were speaking.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir. I would touch on, Mr. Mayor. We had to handle, shows here that decision driven by safety concerns to Carolina Beach. So I Googled, see what I could learn. And this is why specifically increased accidents, there's been a documented rise in golf cart related collisions, including one serious accident involving a teenager in August 2024. A significant cause of serious accidents involves impaired drivers. Unrestrained children, a frequent and dangerous observation is children and babies riding in laps without proper restraints. Traffic congestion, slower moving golf carts contribute to traffic congestion on busy roads. And this is a beach town, which is, you know, the population soars in the summertime. So I think we all imagine what's happening. And then here's a quote by their police chief. The town's permitting system has been described as haphazard by the police chief, making enforcement very difficult, according to WECT TV. So that's why they're phasing out this in the next couple of years. That's just a, that's not statistics, but that's a report that they did on the news.
Thank you. Other observations or questions?
I have a question. What is the cost comparison between a golf cart and an LSV?
Big. So about $4,000 to $6,000.
Okay. I assume it's the LSV that's more expensive, right?
Yeah, the low speed vehicles are more expensive.
And what's the general price of those?
Six to 16,000 plus.
Thank you.
Other questions, observations, second round?
I just appreciate your word of mouth conversations. I'd call that qualitative data.
Okay. Excellent. Well, we've had a lot of information exchanged here. It's an important topic. The charge to council today is after gathering this information to provide feedback to staff if the council wants to move forward to develop an ordinance. If we, if we want to put in an ordinance that allows golf carts in addition to or tandem with or running along the same track as the state statute, then we would need to develop an ordinance with details, what's required there. And we would need to hold a public hearing at a subsequent meeting, et cetera. So that's kind of, while we don't usually take official votes in the work session, what, what the, what staff is trying to do is find out if we want to spend more time and energy to develop. do we want to spend more time and energy to develop a detailed ordinance? Uh, and follow up with the public hearing and then take a vote? Or do, do we want to move ahead or not move ahead? That, that's kind of the question before. Is there a sense of, of council, uh, a comment? Uh, we're just comments on, on that topic, not a vote, just an indication. Do we, do we want to, uh, move ahead with the idea of perhaps, perhaps developing an ordinance, holding the public hearing and going through that process? Or do we want to take the police recommendation and, uh, continue to use the state statute in lieu of liberalizing it? And I'll start with Mr. Transportation. Uh, Mr. Vance is saying, just comments or thoughts?
Uh, I would say in light of the information that has been received, uh, I know that there has been an interest in golf carts, uh, being active on the highways. And with the, I really respect the recommendation of our police, uh, department when it comes to keeping us safe and protecting us and trying to do the best and trying to weigh everything together. Uh, I'm more in line with holding on to the current, uh, general statute that's in place. Uh, and allowing those individuals who want to move up to, uh, using the low speed vehicles to make that investment in doing so. And, and also looking at the staff that will be engaged in, uh, the necessary administrative actions for the golf carts. And I'm hearing also the concerns there and trying to make sure that its consistency would be problematic within itself. So I'm in line with, uh, maintaining or adhering to the current GSA GS general statute that's in place.
Okay. Mr. Jones, your thoughts?
I'm comfortable with the recommendation of the police department. Um, I'll leave it to council as to what they want to do about it moving forward.
Okay. Yeah. We're just kind of testing the wind, holding our finger up in the wind here. Ms. Behringer.
I would really like to feel comfortable about the golf carts, but I have to say that I don't. Uh, and I would, um, prefer that we continue with the police department's recommendation.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Captain. Based off what Mr., uh, what the mayor said, that's if we stay like we are now and something happened at any subdivision, Eagle Ridge or anything else, and somebody got seriously hurt or injured. Is that because they're not allowed and they're not regulated? You know, would somebody be charged or something? I'm assuming they wouldn't have insurance. I mean, I mean, sir, with, could somebody driving the golf cart be charged anything since they're in the rules in place?
Yeah, since it's operating on, on a roadway, I, I think the, the biggest takeaway with, with that and your mentioning is that we have an educational component that needs to be pushed out. It seems critical right now, but yes, it'd be charged since a motor vehicle operating on a roadway.
Okay. All right. And that's not just the town, that's not just the town of Garner ordinance, it's probably a state order, that's the state orders. Okay. All right. But thank you.
Mr. Matthews, thoughts?
Hearing, uh, everybody and the thoughts and what have you, and, uh, I'm not going to live and die by this, by any stretch of imagination. I've had my bridges dusted before and it's okay. Uh, save a vote and all this, um, Mr. Mayor, let's go ahead and pull this whole thing and be done with it. And we'll just stop it right here. If that's okay with the board.
That, that's kind of the way we're hearing the, the wind blowing there. Like, like you said, keep it simple.
Let's just pull the whole project.
Now, what you and I should do is go halves on a low speed vehicle and take turns driving it when we feel like it.
Will you finance it's what I want it?
I'll put you on a payroll deduction plan. How about that? Uh, no, it, it, it is something worth pursuing. I'm always in favor of alternatives to cars. Uh, you know, I hate it when the only way you can get anywhere is in a car as compared to walking or bicycling or low speed vehicles. And we need to have more developments that are tuned in, both, all three of those things. Low speed vehicles have a, have a place. You don't have to jump in a big gas guzzler vehicle every time to run to the, the store. Uh, we need to have that in mind. We won't move in that direction. Uh, but I think you've been very gracious, Mr. Matthews, to say, let's let this one rest for a little while and we'll, we'll, we'll keep pushing along. If it comes back up, we'll address it again. But, uh, I greatly appreciate the thought and ser- serious studies that's going into this. And if there's any takeaway, maybe we can increase some safety through education, reminding people. And we can take them over to Auburn Village and let them see how well that works. Uh, and there's no additional load on the police department with come up with other ordinances, other rules, other stickers, other inspections. Uh, you guys have plenty to do. So, so go there and educate some children in, uh, at Eagle Ridge. So if that makes sense, we'll kind of let this one roll for now.
You think this is good, you wait till the next one.
And the, uh, well, that's the difference in our 55 community and the community that's got kids. That's, I mean, it's a big difference. That's, that's.
You have a different clientele.
Different clientele. And like at the beach, uh, Carolina Beach may not be a good example. And I mean, you know, they have, those populations, it serves us in the summertime to thousands and thousands of people. And, you know, maybe kids on there probably shouldn't be riding golf carts out there, you know? That's, that's what parents may let them do. I don't know.
Good. Well, excellent. Great, great feedback. Thank you very much. Uh, go out there and arrest some speeders or something. We'll, we'll move on to the next.
I appreciate it.
But you might want to stick around for the backyard hens ordinance.
Yeah, this is gonna be good. This, this is no big deal. Just add a couple of hens.
Don't, don't leave, don't leave yet.
Bill Gupton, can I recommend a break since we're so close through the eight o'clock hour?
Oh, good, good idea. This might be a very logical time to take a break. Thank you. And that was before, uh, Ms. Behringer even had a chance to poke me with the yardstick over here to remind me.
Is the chicken going to take more than five minutes?
No, but the other manager reports and et cetera, et cetera. So that being said, let's, let's take about a seven minute, uh, recess and be back in here at eight o'clock sharp. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vance. Yes, thank you for your promptness. We still have some good stuff to cover here this evening. Uh, the next item is number three, the backyard hens ordinance amendment. Uh, Terry Jones, our town attorney is going to be presenting this. But before we even start with the serious discussion on, on the chicken ordinance, I, I, I need to go on the record here. I want to go on the record that I have great respect for chickens and the people who raise them and great admiration. I spent many, a weekend and a summer helping on my uncle's chicken farm, chicken farm. And he used chickens to explain to me the difference between contribution and commitment. He said, if you had an egg this morning, that chicken made a contribution. He said, if you got a southern fried chicken dinner on Sunday, that chicken is committed. So I, I have great respect for chickens and those who raise them. With that being said, I'll pass the microphones to, to Ms. Jones.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And be, before we begin with the exciting topic of chickens, I do want to publicly thank Laney Norris, our legal intern who prepared, um, research for the golf cart, um, discussion and also Matthew Trent from the engineering department and Alex Bone from the planning department who created this map for you. Um, and before we move on, this map also shows our current school zones in Garner, because I know there had been a question from council with respect to where the school zones are. So this is part of the upcoming traffic control ordinance mapping project that, um, Legal is working with the development services departments.
Clarification. So you're, we only have four school zones?
Yeah. Yes, in, in the town limits on. Currently, yes.
Um, one clarification. Uh, the one that says by, by Interstate 40, that says it's on Garner Road, correct?
It's east corner.
Yeah. There's a school zone at East Garner Elementary.
On Creech Road.
On, on, and Creech Road. East Garner Elementary has one because it has the flashing signs.
I believe that's not currently in the town limits, that, that street segment. That's the difference. They, they limited this to, to street segments that are, have been annexed, you know, into town limits. So some of this, what you think is in the ETJ are not in, are not school zones in the municipal town corporate limits.
But there are school zone later.
Yes. So if, if you would like additional mapping, we can ask the planning department and engineering department to work on that.
Well, I mean, I, I believe we paid to put the flashing signals on Jones Officers Road many years ago. Well, we're sure we did. It was part of our project years ago. Cause we went from, uh, no flashing lights to having the flashing solar signals. And I'm almost positive we paid for those. So anyway, whether it's in the city limit or not, I mean, it's a school zone. I mean, you can say it's, you know, it's a school zone that the town contributed to. And we had a cross, we've had a, now we have a crossing guard at Rand, at Rand Road, but that's not a school zone.
Is there a school zone in front of Timber or is there no school zone? We just reduced the speed limit?
Well, Timber, the whole stretch got lowered to 35.
But that's not a school zone. It's not a school zone. It just, we changed the speed limit.
The driveway for the school is on, on Thompson, so they wouldn't technically classify the school zone on Timber. Was DOT's answer to us?
Oh, interesting. Oh, well, a whole nother can of worms with school zones. In fact, while we're speaking of it, if, if one of you would make a note, the school zone of Vandora Springs Road, uh, one of my neighbors pointed out that it going into town, the, the flashing light and everything is, is as it should be. But coming out of town, there's no flashing light. There's no clear definition of, of getting to the school zone. He has some concerns. They just take, take a look.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Harrison can address that.
Excuse me?
Ms. Harrison can address that particular issue.
Oh, would you like, well, well, let's talk about school zones, man, equator chickens.
Why not? Um, yeah. So as far as the one on Vandora Springs specifically, it was hit by a car earlier this year. So we have a replacement flashing light pole for that location. It's at the public works facility. Um, we are just trying to get a contractor to install it. Um, along with, we have new flashing school zone, um, lights to go at Bryan Road Elementary. Um, and then we also have retrofit kits for the remainder of our flashing school zone lights to bring them all into a cloud system, which will allow us to make changes to the timing more readily when there's, um, you know, school cancellations or things like that. So all of that is part of a package that is looking for a contractor to install. So in the works.
Excellent. Thank, thank you for the information. Coincidentally, I believe it's next week. I'm going to Vandora Springs Elementary, uh, to walk to school with the children from that church right there. So the light won't be flashing, but maybe I'll carry my sign, my crossing guard sign.
Oh, good.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Brown Road, which we talked about it the last week or two meetings ago. You, uh, since that's not all been corporate limits, that's, that's another why it's not shown as a town school sign. But we're trying to get the speed limit reduced to 35, so it would all be the same.
Right. We have been trying to do that so far. DOT has not been in favor of reducing the speed limit on Bryan Road. They, they were amenable to letting us install the, the flashing school zone signs. So that is an existing school zone. It's under an NC DOT ordinance, not a town ordinance, which is why it doesn't show up here. And I think it might be more clear if we add the DOT school zone ordinances to this map as well. But that's how Bryan Road is set up now. So it will remain. But that's how Bryan Road is set up now, so it will remain a school zone. It will just have the flashing lights, which are significantly more effective than just the time posted signs. But it still will just reduce the speed limit from 45 to 35, because school zone's only reduced by 10 miles per hour. So we are still working with them on reducing the speed limit in general in that area.
That's a really fast speed limit for a school zone, 35. That's still really fast. And when you see those statistics on survivability from 35 to 25, it's drastic.
Right. Yeah, it's still not low enough that we would be comfortable putting a crosswalk or a crossing guard there, which has been our argument for reducing it.
Well, thank you for paying attention. This is important, too. We talked about the town's job number one is its public safety, and this is a big piece of it, from engineering inspections, all of that stuff. So thank you for your attention to that. And let's get on with those chickens. Here's their attorney.
Thank you for indulging me on that. I mean, this is just a, shows that by putting these things on a map, it's more readily apparent to people than having a list of words in an ordinance in our code. All right, so let's get back to the exciting topic of backyard hens. Currently, in our Chapter Three of the Code of Ordinances for the town, the town does allow up to eight backyard hens. Roosters are prohibited. This does require a permit, and it's available for any lot that contains a residential dwelling. So that's your single-family dwellings, duplexes, including townhouses. It does not include apartment complexes or condos. So your larger multifamily buildings cannot have backyard hens, probably because they don't have traditional backyards to place them in. Council has received a few different citizen requests to allow more than eight chickens. And as a result of that, Councilman Singleton requested that this be placed on an agenda for discussion. The public comment form that's on the code revision project, you know, is available for citizens to provide comments. And we have received one anonymous comment indicating that they would also like to increase the number of backyard hens that are allowed. So again, the Planning Department, who actually implements the permitting process, considering that the backyard hens are considered an accessory use to residential occupied properties, they did prepare research on a number of our local or peer communities. And you will see that the range is pretty much three hens to 10 hens or chickens. No one is allowing roosters. And also, nightdale is restricting peafowl and guinea fowl and certain other birds that I might think were in the chicken family. But basically, unlike the golf cart ordinance, that would be a new program for the town, really increasing the number of chickens doesn't require additional resources of the town. Typically, the complaints that come into Animal Control are about roosters and not the number of hens that someone has in their backyard. So provided there's council consensus to increase the number of hens to, I think the original citizen request was to 10 or 12, then legal staff can draft an ordinance amendment and schedule a public hearing, with the earliest available date would be October 21st. So looking for guidance on whether council would like to go forward with increasing the number of backyard hens allowed in town limits.
Well, let's have a little discussion about chickens. And this time, let's start in the middle of the dais over here, which is very unusual. But since Phil got to introduce the one that he had in mind, let's let Gray go first with thoughts, ideas, questions related to the Backyard Hen Ordinance Amendment.
When you were growing up and helping your uncle, man, when I was working on the farm, where they had hogs and chickens, they weren't, they didn't smell, they were stinky, but backyard hens are a different, a little different animal. Not a little different animal, it's maintained in a different way. I heard, have people asked me, I just wanted to see if we would go up to 10 hens. People, I know people that have more than 10 now, and there's no complaints. I mean, you give your neighbors eggs, you don't get complaints. So, you know, that's just a request. People ask about it several towns, Raleigh, Wake Forest, Clayton, do 10 hens. That's just a simple request to bump it up to 10, so that way they're legal and, you know, even though they may have more now. That's what the request was, just to have 10 hens. It's just a simple request to bump it up a couple. That's it. I mean, you could go to 12, but again, if someone's had 10, that's what I would ask, request, that we just reduce it from eight to 10.
Mr. Matthew, your thoughts?
I have two problems. 10's fine. Just a question, when we look at the town homes out there, it works out like most of them, as you say, like Southern Lowes Foods, right there on Aversboro Road, going into the village, the town homes, they've got the pad on the back, and generally a grill and some seats out there, but then the backyard is open. How is that facilitated with eight, or 10, or six hens? Do you have to build a pen? How does, but your neighbors don't like them. How does that work? I'm just curious. Have we ventured into something different here? And we're approving a lot of these. And like I said, I have no problems with 10 hens. How do they deal with that? Is that going to come back to haunt us? I'm not sure.
So while townhouses are in eligible residential use, because there are coop and run standards that may limit some townhouses that don't have sufficient backyards to do that. Also, in some townhome communities that have covenants and HOAs, they may prohibit it. So regardless of whether the town would allow it, the HOA covenants can be more restrictive in that respect. So I think, you know, the size of the backyard may limit those situations. And you'll see that there is a setback from rear and interior side lot lines of 10 feet. So by the time you're 10 feet from both sides, and, you know, there might not be a lot of room to put a chicken coop in the backyard.
Thank you. And I agree with Gray, 10's fine. It's kind of like an average, I'm thinking.
Okay. Well, let's jump back to Mr. Vance and your thoughts on expanding the chicken limit.
I'm okay with 10.
Okay. Mr. Deliger?
10's fine. And Phil's concerned about townhomes, but that all makes sense.
I'm just curious why people want 10 instead of eight. What are, I mean, I'm fine with it, but...
If you have a big, this is one of mine, has a big family, and you need more chickens to have more, I mean, have more eggs. Got to cook and so forth. That's what they said. That's all big and friendly was, extended family.
Okay, well, I just want to share a personal experience I had. We had chickens, tried to have them for years, and raccoons killed them all. So that is an issue. And trapping a raccoon, you can't kill a raccoon, am I correct? Can't kill them. You can trap them and you can relocate them, but you can't kill them. So it's a catch-22 there. We finally gave up because the raccoons pulled open the chicken wire that was laced together on the top of the pen and got in there and killed them. But I'm fine with 10.
Okay. Well, that's kind of a sense of where council is, but I think we would be remiss if we don't give our police chief a chance to weigh in on the chicken issue. Have you had any rowdy chickens?
I was dying to come up here. Thank you for calling. And Ms. Behringer, you have a very good point. I've got four, well, I had four chickens. I'm down to one now, so. And they got gone pretty quickly over the course of a couple of days. So you definitely have to fortify those coops, but we don't have any issues with 10. I mean, we've got a big family, and our egg supply has dwindled now, so we're going to have to get some more. But yeah, we're definitely okay with 10. We get very few complaints about chickens. It's very rare, so we don't have any issues with it. Thank you.
How do you deal with runaway chickens, though?
Runaway chickens?
Runaways, something.
It can happen.
Well, thank you very much, Chief.
We don't have in our backyard for the same reason that the foxes and the raccoons in our neighborhood.
So it is a violation of the town ordinance to allow your fowl or chickens to run at large. So they can be impounded if necessary.
They won't get a chance. The raccoons will get them first.
Come run around with me down East North Carolina, there are chickens all over the place. And I'm not talking about, we're talking about rural areas, or people have out in the yard. I almost hit several on the side of the road before. I'm being that serious. And we do have someone, you mentioned the peafowl and the guinea fowl. We do have one, my son works at Kenny Walker's Fruity's part-time, and he has them back, he has this fowl. And he has to have them protected because the critters are getting them, too.
Well, I think it was 11 years ago that this council passed the original barnyard hen, backyard, barnyard backyard ordinance. Back then, it was known as the Chicken Wars. There were people on both sides of that, some hated them, some wanted them, some wanted more. But we worked our way through that. So if we can get by with going with the two in the hand versus the eight that's on the ordinance and make it 10, and get that on the consent agenda for next time, that seems to be which way the wind is blowing here. Third on the consent agenda. And happy hunting for your eggs.
So just to clarify, you don't feel that a public hearing's necessary, and we'll just put the ordinance amendment on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
And to clarify, Mayor, you're right, 11 years ago. But it started 13 years ago and got turned down four to one. I was the one. 12 years ago, we tried again, got beat four to one, and then finally passed unanimous. Because everyone had the idea of where they were on the farm and what a chicken coop smelled like, which was not very good. And once you realized it was a little cleaner operation, it passed. It did take three tries.
Excellent. Is that the directive you needed, Attorney Jones?
Yes, thank you, Council. We'll put that on the October 21st agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for considering that.
Okay, so we can turn the page on the chicken ordinance. Let's move right along to updates to the council, and let's go to manager reports, please.
Yes, Mayor, good evening, and to members of council, good evening. Before you tonight, we have two of your standing monthly reports. The first one is the Development Activity Map update. And Ms. Joseph is going to provide an overview of new projects that have been added to the map. So, Ms. Joseph?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Okay, so I will update you on the recent additions to the Development Activity Map for the month of September. This report was generated about a week or so early than previous months, just because of agenda scheduling and getting the report in with the agenda packet versus a handout during the meeting. So that's why it stops at September 18th. So there were four additions to the Development Activity Map. I'll draw your attention to the applications that are in progress, as well as the applications that are under review. So the first here on the screen, you have the Garner Innovation Park. This site is located at Therrington Road, and it's just adjacent to Interstate 40. The applicant is requesting a Tier One rezoning. It's approximately 77 acres. This redevelop, excuse me, rezoning request is in partnership with the Garner Economic Development Committee. And so the applicant is requesting to rezone from R4 to heavy industrial, as well as commercial mixed use. They are proposing a heavy industrial site. There are two parcels here. See if there is a an image to pull up. We don't have an image to pull up on the map, but we've had a pre-application meeting with the applicant. They are in the process, they recently received the adjacent property owners list, so they are in the process of scheduling their neighborhood meetings for this request. A little further south, we have another rezoning request at Hebron Church Road. This is also known as the Starks Property Subdivision. This request is a Tier Two site-specific master plan request for residential development. It is, includes 60 single-family detached lots. This property is adjacent to, you may recognize that it's adjacent to, directly adjacent to the Meadowbrook Country Club town property. Also, you have Homestead at Bryan Farms, a recent development just across, right at Hebron Church Road and Clifford Road. And so they are proposing 60 foot wide lots. And we've had a pre-application meeting with them as well. They are requesting an R4 zoning, so R2 to R4 conditional district. This is my first time reviewing the Development Activity Map. Do you all just want me to go through all four? Or would you like me to pause for questions for any of the specifics? Okay, thank you.
I have a question on that one, in reference to the proximity to Meadowbrook Park. We were looking at other areas of how to enter into Meadowbrook Park. Will this in any way prevent that discussion from going on, or not?
I don't believe so, that there will prevent any access to the Meadowbrook Park site. We have discussed with the applicant of potentially dedicating some land to the park area on this eastern boundary. But there were no discussions about any potential hindrance to access to the park. And you can see here, there's a, if I can zoom in a little bit.
Erin, could you flip back to the Development Activity Map? It may be clear there. So, Mr. Vance, the blue area that is just to the north of the Starks property, that is town-owned property. So the town does control that property, and that's where the planned additional entrance has been. So this would be up beside it, but it would not interfere with that.
Gotcha. Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of quick questions. The dedication, would that be in lieu of a fee in lieu? Is that what those conversations are circulating around?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. And are they going to be a contributor to the Bryan Road White Oak?
We discussed that briefly during the pre-application meeting, that conversation. They are in the Bryan White Oak corridor, but given the number of houses that doesn't trigger the TIA threshold, those conversations, it may still require it, but that hasn't been exactly fleshed out at this point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. All right, and like I said, these application, two applications are in progress. So they have not officially submitted. They're working on their neighborhood meeting, so we haven't started official review for them. We do have, however, two new additions to the map that do include, includes a rezoning that is in review. This property is the Gregorio property. It's right at Old Stage Road. This is a general rezoning request. The applicant, the property is actually in Wake County's jurisdiction. So they are requesting to annex into the town as well to receive City of Raleigh water. But they would also like to develop this site with a single-family home, three-bedroom home, and then a accessory dwelling unit on the site. And then we have at White Oak at 220 Cabela Drive. This is a major site plan for one of the outparcels at Cabela Drive and 70. This is for a sit-down restaurant, does not include a drive-through. But it's roughly 2,500 square feet for a sit-down restaurant. The site plan has had its first TRC review last week. There were no major or significant comments stemming from... week. There were no major or significant comments stemming from, from, from the TRC. So they will be moving forward with, with comments and, and further review. But it's still in its early stages. Don't, we have an idea of what the restaurant will be, but I don't believe it's confirmed. But there is an idea. So there is a, a restaurant named in this proposal, but we think we know what it may be.
And Ms. Joseph, just down to the left, I think we had this presented to us at the previous, one of these was, is a bank, I believe, correct?
Correct. This parcel
Right there, yes.
Here. You'll see that on the screen, would be the bank. And potentially, this would be another restaurant with a drive-through.
Thank you.
There are two restaurants?
Yes. This, this one that's before you this evening, and, and then one just here. But that one would be with a drive-through. This one does not include a drive-through. They have not submitted a site plan for that just yet.
Question back for me. Back to Mr. Dillinger's point, that development next to where we own the golf course out there. So they are aware of participation in that Bryan Road stoplight development? Are they aware of that, or?
Yes, they are. During the pre-application meeting, that was, was brought up, brought to their attention. In fact, their attorney for this particular development is very familiar with the Bryan Road corridor development agreement. So he, he, you know, he's aware of it, you know, they're in the area. But there's still a bit of how that would be worked out, given that it, it's not triggering a TIA. So that, the details of that are still very preliminary. But they are aware that they, that there may be a contribution.
Great, thank you.
I have one more comment on the same property and looking at the map and the conversations on the fee in lieu and the park plan dedication. I know there's a whole formula involved, but I just want to make sure there were, I think the count, there's 60 homes, and the fee in lieu is something like 2,000 a house, or something like that? Only 100?
I would have to check on that. I'm not sure. I believe that fee, I'm not sure what it is, and I know it's based on a calculation, but I'm not sure what that would, would shake out to be. I can always find out from, from our Parks and Rec, Matt Beard would know that. I don't think I have that in, in my notes from the pre-app.
That's all right, if you don't have an answer right now. I just know that, remember the calculation even for the fee, for the dedication has a formula, and the other one has a formula. I just want to make sure if we're getting land, it's useful land to the park, because what I'm looking at here is used river buffers and that kind of stuff that wouldn't actually add to the park.
Right.
And so I just want to make sure we're getting our fair value for, you know, given, which is, you know, most beneficial for what we need to do.
Yeah, I do recall during the pre-application meeting, that Mr. Beard, Matt Beard, he, he didn't have an issue with what they were proposing at the time. He felt that, that area could potentially work well with what could be programmed on that side of the park area.
Yeah, and I think it's a Park and Rec Advisory Committee makes recommendations on that fee in lieu and dedication, so.
Right.
Mr. Singleton on that committee?
Yes, my, yes, sir.
Yeah, so I think just, yeah, y'all are engaged in that. I'll let y'all handle that. But I just have to make sure we're getting our full value there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so that concludes the developments that have been added for the month of September. More than happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think you got them as you went. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. And again, our development activity map on our website is a great resource for council and for residents to learn about what's going on in town and what's being planned and where they are in the process. So I encourage everyone to check it out, to stay informed. Second item under manager reports this evening are, is your pending agenda for your October meetings. Just want to briefly provide some highlights. Looking ahead to your October 7th regular meeting, we have quite a few consent items that'll be before you. Two, I just want to highlight, one, it will be the construction bid for the White Deer Playground, and that's the inclusive playground that will be there. So we'll have the playground and the splash pad going in at the same time. So we're very excited to get that contract awarded. And then as council was so enthusiastic about the idea of bringing a youth council to Garner, we'll have that official resolution for council on the consent agenda item, officially creating that council for the town. So looking forward to that. Under new old business, we'll have discussions on the transportation plan contract. This is to give some feedback to our consultants who will be working with us on that. Council will have an opportunity to provide comments and feedback so that we can finalize the process and the documents for your approval at your following meeting. And then also, we had talked about taking an opportunity to refresh the town strategic plan. And so we'll have a discussion that'll provide a framework and proposed timeline for what that work will look like this fall, and then moving into 2026. Looking ahead to your October 21st regular meeting, we've got two presentations. Duke Health will be here to give us an update on their project in town. And then we have retirement of Jack Baldwin, a long-term employee of our Parks, Recreation and Culture Resources Department. A few consent items as well. And then we'll have three public hearings, since we've addressed the golf carts and the backyard hens this evening. We will only have three on the 21st. Looking at comprehensive plan implementation, this is a follow-up to your discussion a few meetings back. The continuation of the, the public hearing for the UDO. And then coming back to you is Project Cougar, the economic development agreement specifically for the incentive program that they've applied for. And then we'll also have under old new business, approval of the contract for the comprehensive transportation plan, and then your reports of talk of the town and your quarterly capital update reports. And finally, looking ahead to the work session in October, the 30th, Preserving Home will be here. They're a partner in our affordable housing strategy here in town. They will give us an update as their work and the need and opportunity within town. We'll also be potentially discussing traffic control ordinance. And then once again, we'll go over our pending agenda and review the development activity map. So those are the things we have to look forward to at your October meetings. Happy to answer any additional questions that council may have this evening.
Okay, hearing done, we'll move right along.
The only final thing that I will, will add, and the mayor mentioned it at the very beginning of the meeting, is that we are excited that Fireman's Day is scheduled for this Saturday, October 4th, 11 to 5. It'll be starting at Station 1 and all down Main Street with a parade. Keeping our fingers crossed that the forecast stays as pretty as we're expecting it to be. And this will be an exciting Fireman's Day. It's always a great event, but this will be the first time that it's being held as we merge with the fire department. So we're very excited to be part of this year's Fireman's Day events. So there are no other updates for council this evening, and happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay, hearing done, we'll move right along to attorney reports.
No report this evening.
Thank you. And now we will go back with council reports, and let's start down at Mr. Matthews. Send any council reports.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Singleton?
I have a couple. Well, our first question I want to ask is if you and the police chief and the fire chief and the manager and me on the fire truck, are y'all going to get the ladder truck and they can raise you up going down Main Street? That's all I know.
I mean, I told him nothing over 50 feet off the ground.
So I will share with you, our risk manager is not crazy about that idea. And the attorney is not either, and I've been told that not all of us can fit on that. So we're, I talked to the fire chief earlier today, and he's going to work out so that we can be part of the parade, and we'll have to figure out what vehicle or what truck we'll be on, so.
See, the mayor, they had the hose on, sprayed the crowd.
Now, now you're talking.
A couple of things I was going to mention. One, about our former colleague, Mr. Sample. I told Ms. Middle this at his visitation, and when the young lady was here tonight talking about water and sewer and how you had to grow, this, I heard this the first year or so I was in the council, and I was young and green. And we were talking about growing and we had, you know, you remember utility system was not good, and how we were going to grow and do this and do that. And so Joe was talking to me about it. And he got down to the point, and he said, look, Ray, he said, if you got it for Garner to grow, if you can't flush, you can't grow. Meaning you had to have water and sewer capacity. If you can't flush it, you can't grow. Which basically, she said the same thing today, but a whole lot nicer. But I've never forgotten that, and up till recently even, I would joke with him every now and then at the end of phone conversation, hey, Joe, if you can't flush, you can't grow. One more that hardly anybody ever noticed this, is practically the other one that was involved, just passed away. But years ago, I mean, we went through the G-PAC and get the corner elementary campus, and a lot of people put in tremendous amount of time. And the first meeting I ever had in December of 93, we went to close session, and I learned all about that stuff, and went on and on. And we finally turned down the offer from the school board because it was too high. And Mr. Todd calls me up one day, and me and Rex Todd and Joe Sample went to other towns that had old buildings. Two of them had become town halls. One was Betsy, and one was Oxford. We also, Clayton went to town hall then, but we did go through the building. And so we spent a lot of time on those two trips. And a lot of people don't know about all of the time behind the scenes because Rex was the planning director, then he was the economic director here. And when Joe used to write his columns, two cents worth, he nicknamed Rex King Rex, because Rex had the vision to rezone all the Highway 70s, you know, because it was used car lots and manufactured home lots and the center drive-in, which was not, you know, what we needed in Garner at the time. But the time put in, and that, that we did on that, because I was just learning, I was green as a gourd when talking with those two people who were so experienced. So a lot of that, the person who ultimately saved G-PAC was Rex Todd. And but jogging with him and Joe on those two trips, we also toured community centers a little later, and about a year later, on some other journeys. But a lot of people don't know that the type of things you do behind the scenes sometimes. And I won't forget those, because I learned a lot. And it was neat seeing what other towns had done. And, you know, ours didn't become a town hall, but it became a very functional, very useful and a facility that we're proud of. But it's because of some of those, those trips that led, led to that, all that happened. And I remember those, those times riding with Joe and Rex, that was really, really, I learned a lot from both of them. Sure did. It's a lot of people, hardly anybody knows, knows that, but that's, that's what happened behind the scenes. I'm done.
Thank you for reminding us. The people who came before us and made a huge contribution.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Behringer?
Okay. Let's to add to Mr. Singleton's remarks about Rex Todd. I had the privilege of attending the Hank Williams performance at the G-PAC on Saturday night. Just really appreciate the quality of the performances there. I, I learned that Hank Williams wrote and had published his first song when he was 11 years old. That is just phenomenal. Unfortunately, his life was cut short, and he passed away when he was 29. But really appreciate the performances of the G-PAC and what they bring to our town.
Thank you. Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, just one thing. Had quite a few people reaching out to me in the past few weeks on the development that's happening on, on Timber Drive, the different projects there, and kind of watching them evolve over the past several months at Vandora and Timber, and then kind of Grovemont and Timber. And kind of seeing in real time sort of the benefit of having that 25-foot buffer on Timber, and how it preserves that corridor and a lot of the aesthetics. And, and seeing in town, parts of town where we don't have it, like the Old Stage, townhomes over there. I think when the trees went down on Highway 50 to south of the VA Clinic on that hill, just changed the whole landscape of the town, even the apartments that came through here a few weeks ago on Highway 70. You know, what are you going to do with those trees? And, you know, I was pretty content with what was going on on Timber. They were cutting, you could see that buffer and staying there. And then I was like, oh, they're getting the Grovemont. Maybe they're going to leave those on Grovemont. It's like, well, not in our UDO. They cut those suckers down all the way to the road. And it kind of instantly changed that corner. And I think what we need to do is, is use that as a example of, and all these different examples, and probably should have done this years ago, of when we did our UDO rewrite, of implementing very similar tree preservation buffers on these major corridors, these 25-foot preserved buffers. They make a huge difference. It's hard to imagine what the corner of Vandora and Timber would look like if they'd gone in and clear-cut all those trees, or what Grovemont and Timber would look like if they just clear-cut. But we know, because it's happened in other parts of town, we know what it looks like. It just changes everything, and not to any real benefit. There are more benefits to keeping than we've heard already tonight about the benefits of keeping tree canopy, an existing tree canopy. So I think it, it's time to introduce a text amendment that would look at the proper corridors for doing that kind of tree preservation, because it really preserves the character of the town even as we're changing. It still sort of keeps newer parts of Garner with a little bit of that old Garner there. And I hate to repeat it, but going down 50 that one day where they're doing those townhomes, and that whole sort of nice drive turned into just a big hill and sky overnight. And if we could do better, I could see this happening all along Old Stage Road over time. So anyway, I, I put that as an amendment we need to draft and start to consider, so that we don't have to give it another thought. And I think Timber, Grovemont really illustrated, if we put the, if we put the code there and the restriction there, they'll abide by it. Once you go over to Grovemont, they were like, we don't have to do this anymore. They were gone. So it's a little thing, and it can achieve a lot of different benefits at the same time. So that's my council report for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
Yes, sir. I would like to say that the Affordable Housing Task Force will have their first meeting on Monday, October 6th, and just want to make everyone aware of that.
Okay. Any other business, anything else on the agenda? I think we've covered everything on here. And I think there was the idea of having a closed session this evening. I'll ask our town attorney to give us the right motion here, or the right reference if we want to move in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on our discussions, I believe the correct citation for this evening's closed session would be General Statutes 143-318.11A5 to establish the amount of compensation or other material term of an employment contract.
So move?
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. A motion from Mr. Vance and a second from Mr. Matthews to move to a closed session. Is there any other discussion about that? Okay, all in favor of moving to a closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing done, it's unanimous. We will move to a closed session. We will reconvene over there in about three or four minutes. Thank you all. We'll be back here with the report later. Thank you. We'll be back here with the report later. Thank you.
And there's the message from Rick. Back to the open session. The closed session was completed. Vote were taken concerning compensation. Decision was made and we returned to the regular open session. Do we need any other citation there, this town attorney?
No, it's just my understanding that council took action in closed session to determine the compensation amounts for the town attorney and town manager.
Yes, that is correct. That being said, I think we've completed our business here this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing done, sounds unanimous. Session adjourned. Thank you.